Howel Township Planning Board, June 5, 2008. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howel Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice has been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on May 23, 2008, said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and Tri-Town News. Second, on May 23, 2008, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howel. Third, on May 23, 2008, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howel Township Municipal Building, Preventoryum Road, Howel, New Jersey. Special Notice in accordance with Fire Prevention Code. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code, be advised that this facility is designed with three emergency exits for your safety. The locations are as follows. Upon exiting the meeting room to the rear, they are to your immediate left and immediate right and at the front of the meeting room at the left of the dais. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howel Township TV 77. Roll call?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Mr. Frazer?
Here.
Mr. Sayah?
Present.
Mr. Schneider? I know his mother-in-law passed away, so he'll be excused. Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Visslaki?
Here.
Mrs. Clark? Mrs. Dalton?
She just called. She'll be here in a little while. She's running late.
Mr. Morello?
Here.
Chairman Estivus?
Here.
You have a quorum.
I'll let the record show that this is, the first part of the meeting is a workshop meeting on Council on Affordable Housing where Jennifer and Mark will be doing a short presentation for us.
Good evening. I'll just let Curtis sit down.
For the record, Mr. Visslaki has arrived and Mrs. Clark has arrived.
So, basically what we wanted to do with this meeting is take a couple steps backwards because I know that we've been diligently working at the Subcommittee trying to come up with a plan to address our third round affordable housing obligation. But I wanted to take a step backwards and give a little bit of background information with respect to kind of how we got to this point and what we're going to be dealing with moving forward because I know that you're probably going to be receiving a lot of questions and during the public meeting process, I would anticipate a lot of members of the public coming out, asking questions, et cetera. So this is kind of an opportunity to give more of a overall picture of what we're dealing with. In May, I think it was the first week in May of this past year of '08, COA formally adopted the revised third round rules. At the same time that they adopted these rules, they also proposed amendments to the rules. And those amendments in part were in reaction to the over 5,000 comments that COA received with respect to the rules that had been originally proposed in December. At this point, we've been told by representatives of COA as well as Joe Doria's office that we should be utilizing these proposed rules as we frame our plan. Those rules are scheduled to be adopted probably in September. And quite frankly, there's really not a lot of substantive changes to the rules. There's a little, you know, now we'll get credits for demolitions. They modified the density bonus a little bit. There's no more additional market rate unit for every affordable unit that you provide. COA now has come out with things like presumptive densities with minimum set-asides based on the planning area that you're in. But that's kind of getting a little ahead of the point. So what I want to do is kind of go back and give you the overall framework. COA every year publishes income limits based on bedrooms, you know, the bedroom count on different types of housing types and people anticipated to live in each of these units. They're published on the website. I'll give Barbara a copy of this. It's like a matrix table based on region. We are in Region 4, which is Mercer, Monmouth, and Ocean County. So, to give you an example, the median income in Mercer, for Region 4, for a four-person household is $84,566. So what that translates into, the income for a four-person, a moderate-income household because we're dealing with low and moderate-income households, a moderate-income household with four people would be $67,653. So that would be household income for a four-person household that would meet the moderate-income standards in our region. Low income is $42,283 and very low is $25,370. So that just kind of gives you an idea of the overall household income, maximum income limits that we're dealing with in this region for a household of four people. So what does that translate into in terms of what we can anticipate in terms of rents and mortgages, which I think is important to understand because it really goes to the heart of who we're really trying to serve with this type of housing? So, when you look at our region to try to calculate out the mortgages or the, let's start with rents because most of the units that we're going to be dealing with are going to be apartments. You're talking about rents for a one-bedroom apartment ranging from $950 a month to about $550 a month depending on if you're moderate or very low. But that's the range for a one-bedroom apartment. So, and that goes all the way up to a three-bedroom apartment, the rents range from about $1,300 a month to $770 a month. So, $1,300 a month is a significant amount of rent. So, one of the things that we need to focus on when we're moving this process forward is who this housing ultimately really is going to serve. And what you typically find is you find a lot of municipal employees, a lot of firemen, policemen, teachers, single parents, and those types of things. So, it's important to keep that in mind when we're dealing with these projects moving forward or any potential project that comes across because I know that there's this perception of what and whom occupies these affordable housing developments. And when you're talking about a three-bedroom apartment renting for $1,300 a month, you know, that person obviously has to have an income in order to make that rental payment. So I just want those types of things to be clear.
Are we required to have low, try for low income?
Your obligation is divided into 50% of the obligation is moderate income and 50% is low income. And there's incentives on the development side to providing very low. So, even a low income for a three-bedroom unit is about $1,000 a month. So, I mean, you know, it's not $200 a month that we're dealing with here. We're dealing with somebody that has to have an income, has to demonstrate their ability to pay rent or qualify for a mortgage if it's a for-sale unit. So, I just think that that's just an important piece of information to keep in mind because I know that there's a lot of misconception over the population that inhabits these units.
But one other thing is now, is there restrictions on the number of occupants per unit because we hear stories of, you know, a three-bedroom unit and having 10 to 10 people living in a three-bedroom unit?
COA doesn't have those types of restrictions?
I can tell you also, it's constitutionally unlawful because you start to dictate the family structure for people. You can legislate, if you have multiple people living in a house or in an apartment unit that are not related to each other, then it becomes multifamily and it's against the zoning ordinance, you can regulate that. But to say you can have X amount of people in each bedroom is unconstitutional.
I'm just saying, it mean you could get to a lower moderate-income family and, you know, it's the mother and father and like six kids. I mean, is that, that's legal then, right?
That's, you cannot tell people how many kids they can have.
I was just curious.
I'm also, I would also assume that there's got to be some sort of occupancy fire code. I mean, in an apartment building that's regulated, there's probably like maximum occupancy requirements from the fire code perspective. But I don't think that that's really, it's not a COA issue. It's something else. And just to give you an idea from a mortgage perspective, if you're talking about a for-sale unit, and again, that ranges anywhere for a four-bedroom house, the rent, I mean, the mortgage is about $215,000 for a mortgage, ranging to a one-bedroom house, which is about $135,000 for a mortgage. So, I, you know, and there are specific requirements as to what applicants for these types of units need to provide in order to qualify and be put on a list that's kept by the county and at COA as far as eligible occupants for these types of units. And there has to be a demonstration of an income. So I just want to dispel that these are going to be areas that are going to have people living in them that have no jobs. To qualify, you need to demonstrate an income. What has happened, and this is an enforcement issue, is that those units then become reoccupied. But that's not, again, not our issue. That's an enforcement issue, making sure that the people that occupy the units are the ones that are eligible and have met all the criteria. So, that's kind of gives you an idea of the range of mortgages and rents that we're dealing with depending upon the unit and the bedroom number. When you talk about affordable units, I know it's very easy to say, well, we have this development over here and I know the people that live there probably make in that income range, but there's specific criteria that the DCA and COA has established that determine whether or not a unit is eligible to receive credit. And I know the people that come to the Subcommittee meetings have heard me say this on a number of occasions, but there's specific criteria and I think it's identified on one of those handouts that Mark had given you with respect to becoming credit-worthy, I like to call And the first of which is a planning area designation, which is the state plan identified by OSG. And if you look at the map that's up on the wall, and I think Mark also handed out 11x17 version so it's easier to see, if you look at Howel, the areas that are identified in kind of like the orangey tan color, that's a planning area 2. And COA says that the sites have to be located in a planning area 1, planning area 2, or designated center. That's one of the criteria. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending upon how you want to look at it, Howel doesn't maintain any planning area 1. That's urban, which you certainly don't have here in town. And quite frankly, there's only limited areas of planning area 2. And if you could, if you look on the map, you can see it's kind of runs along the Route 9 corridor. There's an area down near Brick in the Ramtown area and, and that's pretty, in Farmingdale, but that's kind of not really our issue here. So there's really only very limited areas that are even planning area 2 and Howel has no designated centers. The second issue, which I think is even more significant, is the site has to have sewer. Sewer and water, but most importantly sewer. And if you look on this map, you'll see kind of an over, like a hatch overlay, either red or black, and that shows either existing sewer or areas of proposed sewer. It's much easier to see on the big map than on the small map, but basically that further limits the areas that would receive credit in terms of being eligible. So what we're doing now is we're taking the 64 square miles and we're really reducing the areas that we can even propose affordable housing based on all these criteria. The site cannot be, go ahead.
Are you saying proposed sewer doesn't count?
It does. Proposed sewer does count because it's in a, it's in the approved sewer service area, but there's no existing utilities in the ground. If a site is outside the sewer service area, then you would have to go through the process of a waste water management plan amendment, go through the county, then to the state, and there's no guarantee that that site will be included in the plan although affordable housing projects clearly take precedent over other things. It makes the plan a little vulnerable to objectors when you have all these additional outside hoops to go through before the site could be determined to be eligible for credit. Some of the other site suitability criteria is clear title to the property. That typically hasn't been a problem in most instances. You need to demonstrate that the site is actually developable, meaning it can't be encumbered by wetlands, which was a trick that people used many years ago to just zone pieces of property for affordable housing to meet their obligation, understanding that in reality, there's absolutely no ability to actually build on that piece of property. So it was just kind of like an exercise on paper. So they kind of caught on to that and that's not, not allowed, you're not allowed to do that anymore. It has to have street access. And while this is pretty important, if you can demonstrate an access easement or some other way to gain access to the site, typically they accept that as okay. And it needs to be adjacent to compatible uses. And again, that's also a little subjective depending on, you know, who's looking at it. And the goal is to have these sites located near things, near public transportation, near shopping. You know, the objective is not to put these sites kind of in the most remote location in town because that's going to cause the least uproar, but then these people are going to live out in the middle of nowhere with no access to anything. And so what we have done at the Subcommittee is we've ident, we've created a matrix. I think Mr. Sayah actually came up with this matrix idea. And we created a matrix identifying all of these site suitability criteria and we created a ranking system. And as developers and other entities approach the municipality saying they want to solve our affordable housing problems, we take them, we take the sites that they have proposed and we rank them, we ranked them in this matrix without disclosing the location of where these things are located. So we're basically looking at all of these sites without really having a good idea whether or not, you know, where they are.
It was based purely on the requirements aspect.
Right.
That was basically our ultimate goal was because we didn't want to seem like we were favoring one part of town or anything like that. We wanted to go and be ambiguous and just say, which areas come up and meet the criteria that COA set forth?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
For one moment. I thought that may have been my misunderstanding tonight, we were just going to talk about the new rules and what-
Yes, we're not talking about this matrix.
Right.
Well, I'm not kidding. I'm just giving you an update as to kind of where we are.
How we came up with it.
Right.
I would suggest we not mention anything more about it than what we have mentioned because that actually starts to become like hearing on the fair share plan.
So basically what we're dealing with with these rules are, is that they've established new numbers. So when the rules were adopted in May and the proposed rules went forward, they changed their numbers. COA did. Changed their projections. And I could tell you in Howel, the numbers went down a little bit. Now, don't get excited. We're talking, it went down by like six units. So, we had originally projected 868 units and I think that the new rules projected 861 units. I'm sorry, it went down by seven. What the regulations do say though is, yes, COA has these projections that go out from 2004 to 2018, but you're required to prepare your own municipal projection. And what that does is it takes building permits, CO issued, approved projects from 2004 to create a trend, and that number is to be projected out to the year 2018 using formulas that were established by COA. We did that based on the building permits and CO issues. We got all that information from your building department. We got information from Barbara on the projects that had been approved and we projected it out and unfortunately, the number came out to 925 units out to 2018. And the way the regulations are written, you have to take the higher of the two numbers.
When, when does the regulation tell you when you have to start your trend and end your trend?
Yes. Yes. 2004. January 1, 2004. So, and you've, and in the plan that you prepare, you need to provide that analysis and your growth, and they call it your growth share projection based on both residential and non-residential development and project that forward to 2018. So that's what we did and came out with 925 units. So that's the number that we have to start from moving forward. So the plan that we're, you know, we're working on is to address Howel's affordable housing obligation from the year 2004 out to the year 2018. That was expanded from, originally it was at 2014 and now it expanded out to 2018. That's where the projection goes to. Some of the things that I discussed kind of briefly were the projected rules now eliminate these density bonuses for developers. The rules that had been proposed in December basically stated that for every affordable housing unit a developer proposes on-site, the municipality is obligated to give them an additional market rate unit. However, that's no longer the case. So now, the situation, they've created these presumptive densities based on your planning area. So if you're in a planning area 2, your presumptive density is six units to the acre with a 25% set aside. So that gives you 75% market rate units, 25% affordable units. If you're in a planning area 4 or 5, which is on the map, it's the green and the blue, and you have sewer, the presumptive density is four units to the acre with a 25% set aside. So those are the types of densities and set-asides that we're going to be dealing with as we move forward with respect to any kind of inclusionary project that wants to be put in our plan. A couple other changes is that it appears now you can actually zone for affordable housing with utilizing those presumptive densities. So if there's areas that we feel are appropriate for affordable housing, we can propose to rezone them for affordable housing purposes at whatever the presumptive density is. If it's in the PA 4 area, in the planning area 4, we would assume four units to the acre with a 25% set aside. And we can estimate based on GIS data how many prospective units could be generated out of that proposed area. That's changed from the rules as originally proposed, which basically said you have to have a developer, a plan that identifies that. So that gives us a little bit, a little bit more flexibility, but in terms of how we're going to come up with this number. My advice would not be to just satisfy the entire obligation through zoning. We would have to propose to rezone a substantial amount of area to generate 900 units. But it may be used in combination, you know, looking at some specific locations that may generate a couple of units that, you know, maybe we then include a couple of projects and not all the projects or whatever. But it's another methodology that we can utilize to help meet our obligation that was originally not permitted under the rules as proposed in December.
I have two questions for you, Jen. How much of the town is in a PA, in a PA 5 approximately in an environmentally sensitive area? We have no PA 1 and we have, and I'm looking at the map, I believe most of our PA 2 is built out already.
Yes, I think-
So where are we in as far as environmentally sensitive areas?
I would say about 60% of the town is in a PA 4 or 5. That's just a rough guess based on just eyeballing it from the map. However, so basically, what my advice would be is that we seek waivers from COA with respect to the planning area requirement.
Well, don't we have to get those waivers from the Office of Smart Growth, not COA?
No. It's, we're not asking to change the planning area designation. We're asking COA to accept sites in a PA 4, for example, as eligible. And we have successfully done this in the past. However, if the site is located in a PA 4, it needs to have sewer. So there are definitely areas in town that are located outside of the PA 2 that have either existing sewer or in a proposed sewer service area. And those have consistently, not just here, but in other areas of the state, received that waiver to get credit. And an example is Elon, which is in a PA 4, that would need to get a waiver from COA in order to be eligible for credit.
And then my next question is, our obligation is 925 units. We're not starting at zero.
No, we're not. We have credits-
How many units do we have credits for right now?
The shortfall is easier for me to calculate just because I know that, we're short 721 units. Credits, I'm sorry, not units, credits.
720?
They have, the regulations, there's many ways we can achieve that number. The most expeditious obviously would be to use rental units because 25% of our total obligation has to be rentals. That's a minimum. You receive one, and that's 232 units. So you have to get 232 rental units before you can start receiving bonus credits for those rental units. Above that 232 number, you can get two-for-one credit for every rental unit for the next 232 units. So, you're not talking about 721 actual units. You're talking somewhere around 600. And it depends on if it's a senior unit, it does, it gets a different type of bonus versus a family unit which gets the two-for-one bonus. So, there's no real, there's, it's difficult for me to tell you exactly how many units you need because it depends on the type of unit that is being put in the plan. And the math changes depending upon, you know, if we're going to RCA out any units, which is still as of today permitted, you can RCA out up to half of your obligation.
But financially, it's not a feasible idea to do that.
The cost is 67,000, a minimum of $67,000 a unit to RCA out.
Now, another thing, Jen, I want to step back. Based on the environmental areas and because our PA 2 seems to be built out, I've heard, I believe Mark was like saying is, the only alternative that COA gives you is, well, you got to build up.
Correct.
You know, and that's where we get into a thing of, you know, what kind of standards do you set for height and stuff like that?
Well, that kind of leads me into the next point is that when COA is saying to you that we have now these new presumptive densities of six units to the acre and four units to the acre, both with a 25% set aside, they're also saying in addition to that, towns have to add additional incentives like increased heights and relaxed building bulk requirements in order to accommodate affordable housing projects. So, that's just something to think about in terms of, you know, our height requirements in residential zones are, is 35 feet. So what they're basically saying is that for an affordable housing project, we need to allow increased height to get to your minimum obligation.
And this is where, you know, zoning a particular area comes into play because you can, instead of these height requirements being spread out throughout the whole town, those bulk requirements can only be allocated to that specific zone. So, I mean, that's where the, it becomes advantageous for us to possibly use a designated COA zone in town.
And unlike other zoning or rezoning types of initiatives that a municipality may undertake, you're not going to fall into spot zoning with affordable housing. You can zone specific properties for affordable housing without the fear of being, it being spot zoning. This is one of those types of zoning that it's appropriate to do on a lot-by-lot or site-by-site basis.
Jennifer, on one of the meetings I went to, I think Commissioner Dora was there, he was kind of encouraging when municipalities have like PA 4, PA 5 areas like, you know, we have, they were kind of encouraging going up rather than sprawling out, so.
Well, that kind of coincides with the- Well, that kind of coincides with the Office of Smart Growth's mixed use kind of more dense development versus sprawled development. And, you know, in either case, it's a policy decision really of the municipality, whether they want to concentrate development, you know, in one or two locations at a higher density, higher buildings, or they want to spread things out and encumber more land throughout the municipality with affordable housing units. That's really a policy decision. But the density and the height issue, especially for mixed use type developments, that kind of coincides with Smart Growth's principles, which is kind of also under DCA and under Commissioner Doria's purview.
Jennifer, so if I understand you correctly though, you're saying that COA has certain standards in place in regards to transportation asset, access, roadway access, adjacent compatible uses?
They have site suitability criteria, but it's not, it doesn't say, it has to dump out onto a collector road. It says it has to have street access. So, you know, that's pretty general.
Okay.
Um, it, it encourages the, these sites be located to adjacent or adjacent to compatible uses. So what they don't want is you have an industrial area where you're having like heavy, heavy industrial warehousing and you plop an affordable housing project right in the middle of that so that it doesn't impact the other residents in the community. But.
So they're not requiring, they're only encouraging?
It's part of their site suitability criteria, but what I would say is that with respect to whether or not you're going to receive credits, some of the criteria is like if it doesn't have sewer, you're not going to get credit. If it's next to commercial, you know, they're not going to not give you credit if the residential is next to commercial. So they just want to make sure that where the municipalities are putting these units is not, you know, totally segregating these developments from the rest of the population.
Which brings me to my question is how much of the PA two zoning could they theoretically say it does not apply to COA or you can't, would not pass COA muster?
I don't know what, I don't know, I'm just saying.
So basically, if we wanted to stick the affordable housing sites in PA two, they could not stop us essentially.
They want you to put it.
They want you to.
I just want to make sure, but I want to make sure though legally, can they stop us and say, no, it's not near transportation, it's not near a collector road?
Well, PA two is not zoning. I mean, there's two different things, like PA two.
I think when, when, what you're asking in this municipality, our PA two is on a state highway. It's near, it's, it is a transportation hub and we have a park and ride. We have bus stops that are, that are all along it. Most of that area is sewered and, and has, and has public water. So, you know, the vast majority of that, of our PA two satisfies all of the criteria.
Correct. But don't misunderstand though, PA two doesn't denote zoning. So if you could have, you know, areas that have industrial warehousing in a PA two, which would be incompatible with residential, you know, the planning area is not your local zoning regulating the use site.
I understand that. What about three and four? What I'm getting at really is in a roundabout way, let me just be direct, would COA ever say to us, we will not approve a COA development in, in an area that is not near what we want it to be for transportation or collector road?
I think what Jennifer was saying before is aside from sewer and, and water, the other standards are very subjective.
Right.
And they defy uniform application by COA on each and every one. I think though, and it's been my experience and Jen, I don't know if it's yours, they're not going to take actions which make it harder for you to create affordable housing.
I mean, unless the site is really egregiously in conflict with everything, I think that, you know, sewer and water is the most critical component because any type of affordable housing development needs to maintain some side, some type of density which would make septic systems very difficult. So the sewer and water is an issue that I don't, I have not seen them waive, I would say 90% of the circumstances. You know, they would rather you go through the efforts of trying to amend your wastewater management plan to bring sewer to the sites than they would be for you to put an affordable housing site on a septic system. I mean, I'm not saying for individual houses, that's one thing, but most of the developments maintain pretty significant density. So in that instance, I don't even know if septic's could be approved. I don't know that. But they really look to have public utilities available.
What about transportation? How big is that on their list?
It's not that high. At this point, I think what they're really desperate for is units. So if you're, you know, three blocks off of a state highway, I don't think they're going to say you're too far from, from transportation.
Jennifer, on the density bonuses, are there any, are they looking for any open space for these areas? Well, that's not even, they don't even care.
No.
Okay.
I have a question, Jennifer. Does required bulk, you know, bulk zoning require, requirements that are relaxed? Are we going to have any conflict with the DEP stormwater management regulations? Are they, are they looking to, are they, do we have to relax those?
No.
I mean, we have to, we have to see one stream?
Yeah, that's, I don't think that's the issue. It's more, um, front yard setback or height or things like that. And the other thing to keep in mind is typically when you select sites to be included in your housing plan and the housing plan element, you know, housing element, fair share plan gets approved by the planning board and then endorsed by the governing body and then, you know, assuming we're going to get substantive certification from COA, those sites you enter into a development, the governing body enters into a development agreement with those individual landowners for that affordable housing project. And most typically, those sites are zoned specifically for those projects because COA does not want a site to be put in your housing plan and then it be in conflict with your zoning standards and then it not get approved at the planning board level. So they really want the plant, those, those sites that get approved and put in the plan to be variance free, waiver free when they come before the board to the maximum extent they can. And most agreements that I've seen have a provision in there that require planning boards to give like a 15% latitude on the bulk standards established so that, you know, because usually the agreements are made before all final engineering is completed. So if there's an issue where you need to move, you know, the buildings need to move a little bit closer together than you originally anticipated and that's in your bulk requirements, you know, it gives, um, like a 15% latitude where it wouldn't require variances. So what would happen is in most cases, zoning standards we put in place for these developments, so we really wouldn't have to worry about, um, you know, granting a lot of relief on those applications.
Could you go over the triggers that have to take place before you can get a two for one credit?
Sure. So as I said, the requirements that COA, there's a minimum 25% rental obligation from your, your overall obligation, which is 232 units. So you need at least 232 rental units, which would receive one for one credit. Above those 232 units, every rental unit, family rental unit above and beyond like the 233rd family rental unit would receive two for one credit. So for every one unit built, the town would get two credits against their obligation, only for another 232 units. So let's say you had 232, one for one, 232, two for one.
It's 116 rental, and you get credit?
You're going to get additional 232 credits. And then above that, it goes back to one to one, one for one.
The original understanding was that the two for one credit after that was supposed to continue?
That's correct. So that's a new whammy that they're giving us.
Jen?
Yes.
Angela, I would just say something. Is that a clue trailer parks?
Well, actually, I've, Mr. Tantillo may not be familiar, but I, Jennifer knows, I have been asking and continue to ask, and I arrived late, so I wasn't going to ask the question if it had already been gone over.
It has not been asked.
So the, the question is where, where are we in terms of how creative can we be with trailer parks?
Trailer parks are a difficult entity to get credit for because you have a landowner and then you have, and the individual mobile homeowners lease the pad so they don't own the ground. And then you have, they own their actual units, but they're registered as motor vehicles. So for, in order to receive credit for existing mobile home parks, you would have to get an existing landowner to deed restrict their property for 30 years, limiting the amount of rents that they could get for those units. And you would also have to get a deed restriction through the DOT on each of those people that own those units for 30 years. And all those people that live in those units have to meet the income criteria in order to be eligible for credit. So you would have to get their tax returns and, and income statements, et cetera, for a period of years to demonstrate compliance. I can tell you, we've looked into it and.
It's likely an impossibility.
Not one of the park owners will call you back.
Correct.
I mean, in my mind, it, it seems that there's got to be some way, we do it with farms where, where there is money given to landowners to sell their development rights in exchange for restrictions on what they can do with their property.
There's, that's certainly an option. I could tell you that we've reached out two separate occasions via certified mail to these people. Nothing. I could, and I know that they've done it in other communities, however, what has happened in those other communities is that the park has been purchased.
For closed, right.
It's been foreclosed upon, purchased by a nonprofit organization who is willing to deed restrict it for 30 years. And there's a lot of vacancies in the park and so they have deed restricted the units that are going on the vacant pads. And then as units become available, as people leave, they're purchasing the units and then putting them on the roll. So it's an attenuating process. Um, you know, certainly that's an option here if we could get somebody to number one, return my phone calls or respond to the letters that we've written and, you know, get a nonprofit interested and figure out, you know, how the financing would work. I could tell you that we don't have that much money in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
It's going to be difficult to try to get, to find out if everybody is financially eligible. And then imagine if somebody isn't, somebody came into money, but, you know, they just like where they live, they don't want to move out and you're going to tell them you're, you've got to move out now because you make two.
No, I don't think we would have to move out, but that, you just wouldn't get credit for that.
You don't get credit for that unit. It doesn't disqualify the entire, the entire.
So, you know, it, there is an option for that, but it, it's definitely not an easy one. And we would have to get a willing participant, which I have been unable to do up to this point. I mean, we've, we've called, I can't even tell you how many times. Mark has called multiple times. I have called. We've sent certified letters two separate occasions.
See, if you're a business owner, I mean, if you own a piece of property, why would you want to deed restrict your property to reduce your income?
Well, I mean.
Or to, to limit your income. It's different if you're a farmer and you, you know, you don't want to work the land anymore and your income's going to decrease anyway. You get a fixed price. It's, it's different, you know?
Jen, I want to, I want to start our regular meeting on time, so I'd like to wrap this up so we can have a few minute break in front of, in front of the next meeting. So can you just, you know, summarize, wrap up?
Sure.
And we can adjourn this workshop.
So basically, just to, to go over kind of where we are, you know, we're in the process, you know, right now, the proposed regulations that came out on May 3rd are coming out for public comment. Or they're out already for public comment?
They're out.
Out for public comment. They're definitely better than they were in terms of now we receive credits for demolitions. They modified some of the calculations with respect to warehousing and how many jobs, et cetera, those types of developments create. So it's definitely gotten a little bit better, but it's still, I think in my opinion, has a long way to go before it really is achieving what its original intent was. A couple of things that are on the horizon in terms of legislation, obviously there's a bill pending to eliminate RCAs. I don't necessarily know how that's faring. There's also a push to eliminate the in lieu contribution for non-residential development just having them pay a straight two and a half percent development fee assessment. However, the bad news on that is, is that the development still generates an obligation. The, the non-residential developers just paying the development fee assessment instead of paying the 161 per unit like we're making them do now in those areas that maintain that requirement. But from a procedural standpoint, just so that you're all aware, you know, we're working on preparing, you know, the plan. We have, you know, the front portion of it with respect to demographics, the projections and all the, the information that was involved in the original submission, pretty much up to date. So now we're dealing with this shortfall, 721 units and how we're going to accommodate that. We have to go out for public hearing in front of this board. I think the goal runs sometime.
We're hoping, we're hoping in the fall because we've actually been granted an extension for when we have to have the plan. In all municipalities, their plans are now due December 31st. Previously, our plan had been done.
Or it was November 14th was our original?
Right. Originally it was November 14th. Now it's December 31st. So we have a little extra time.
Okay, so, so we're looking at public hearings probably early September?
Yeah, I mean, the goal is typically in this municipality, it's taken two or three of our hearings to adopt it. We also need to give the governing body sufficient amount of time to look at it and decide whether they're going to endorse it or not. Just the one caveat to everything you heard, it could all change by the time we start our hearings. The League of Municipalities is preparing their appeal to the rules. The New Jersey Builders Association is preparing their appeal. And the group that represents the industrial warehouse and commercial property owners, they are also preparing an appeal to, to the rules.
As well.
As well as the Fair Share Housing Council, I believe. So no matter what side of the table you're on, they're all unhappy and they're all contemplating or not contemplating, they are preparing their appeals.
I, I heard also the DEP is filing, filing a complaint as well.
I don't know that the DEP is going to challenge it, but.
Thank, thank you, Jen. Thank you, Mark.
If you have any other questions, you know, feel free to email me or call me or what have you, because I know we kind of like went pretty quickly through the whole, the whole process.
Mr. Chair, just one quick thing. Since I've been on this board, this is our first workshop meeting that I've ever had. So I just want to thank you for having this workshop.
You're welcome.
But I just also want to say that we could see how much.
It's not a workshop meeting. It was, it's a meeting of our full board just to go over the rules.
Okay. Anything else?
I was just going to say, I, I think that we can see how much this entails and, and encourage that maybe we do this again in the future. That's all.
Okay. I want to thank all the board members for taking time out of their own schedules, for coming early. I'd like to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn this, Mr. Chair? No, this is all part of our regular meeting. This is just to take a break.
Take a break, okay. We'll take a 10 minute break.
The board will now reconvene.
Since we read our opening statement and did our roll call, I would like to ask everyone to please rise for the pledge in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some minutes from both regular and executive session, is that correct, Ms. Capitan?
Yes.
Okay. We have regular meeting minutes from April 17th, 2008. I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of those minutes, please.
Make the motion.
Second, Mr. Tantillo and Mr. Burgess.
I don't have the certification. I don't have it. Do I? Yeah, I have the certification, just a second. I don't have it. I wasn't here. Well, I'm sure they got, I don't have a copy, show them. They didn't? All right. It's okay, don't worry about it.
You get to talk. We had a.
You want a roll call?
Yes, please.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazee?
Yes.
Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Oh, for the record, Mr. Schneider has arrived. Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislacki?
Here.
No, yes or no?
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Morello?
Yes.
Chairman Estes?
Yes. Also, we have executive session minutes from April 17th, 2008. Can I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burgess and Mr. Tantillo.
Okay. Mr.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazee?
Yes.
Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislacki?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Morello?
Yes.
Chairman Estes?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Mr. Castro, do we have any vouchers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, have you viewed all of them? They appear to be in order.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor of approving the vouchers?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? We have one piece of correspondence this evening?
Yes, we do. We have an ordinance, outdoor display of goods memo from Bruce Davis dated May 21, 2008. Does the board have any comments?
Might entertain any comments for any board members regarding this ordinance?
Mr. Chair, I have one comment.
Yes.
In the ordinance, it said, um, the outdoor displays shall be restricted to NC, HC, HD1, and there was a typo that said HD zones. I'm sure it was HT, HD2 zones. But my question was, HT, HD2 zones states that the purpose of the HD2 zone is to provide for the appropriate non-retail development of the Route 33 corridor. So I was just wondering if this would be applicable, that outdoor displays and sales would be allowed in the zone. So I'll just forward that to Barbara to get to Bruce.
Is there any other comment?
I have your comments.
Okay, you'll forward that on to...
Yes, I can.
The council? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think, though, Mr. Castro's comments go a little bit towards what we have to vote on today, which is whether the ordinance is consistent with the municipal master plan.
I agree.
I guess, Mr. Castro, your concern is just with one portion of it, whether applying it to the HD-2 zone is consistent with what the goals of our municipal master plan are for that area, right?
Correct.
Okay.
When is this? This is scheduled for the June 10th meeting, Tuesday meeting?
Yes.
Okay. With that comment, though, with that comment, though, can we still vote?
Well, you would have to determine as a board whether you're all in agreement with the concern that Mr. Castro has, and, you know, whether it's consistent or inconsistent.
Well, Mr. Castro, I mean, it does, the ordinance does say later on in Section F on the third page, the ordinance does not establish new principle or ancillary uses in any zone, nor does it affect or alter any bulk requirements. So basically, if what you're saying is that under all circumstances, there's no uses in an HD2 zone that would yield someone, an owner or occupant's ability to have one of these sales, then they're not gonna be able to. So I don't, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think it's inconsistent.
Is there any other comment?
I...
Yes, Mr. Tantillo.
I'd just like to say, I got some phone calls from the public, and I wish the public would go to the township meetings and pick up, they're right on a desk out there, it tells you, that whole ordinance is written, and they've come up with some weird things. All I heard was you can't have a yard sale, you can't have this, you can't have that, completely opposite of what it says on there. So I believe, I wish the public would just, if they're watching this, go to the township meetings and listen, and save a lot of aggravation, because gossip sure starts trouble. Thank you.
I would like to entertain a motion to move this, and that it does comply with our master plan.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Burgess and Mr. Sayah.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazee?
Yes.
Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislacki?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Morello?
Yes.
Chairman Estes?
Yes. We'll move on to resolutions at this point. Our first resolution is Caribou Cafe, case number SP 922, resolution regarding submission waivers. Eligible voters are Burgess, Schneider, Tantillo, Vislacki, Castro, Clark, Morello, and Estes.
I'll move that, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Schneider and Mr. Vislacki.
I'll look for them. If I can't find them, I'll ask you...
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislacki?
Yes.
Mr. Castro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Morello?
Yes.
Chairman Estes?
Yes.
Resolution is memorialized.
Next resolution, George Schneider, case number SD 2936, resolution regarding submission waivers. Eligible voters are Burgess, Schneider, Tantillo, Vislacki, Castro, Clark, Dalton, Morello, and Estes.
I'll make a motion to memorialize. Second.
Mr. Vislacki and Mr. Tantillo.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislacki?
Yes.
Mr. Castro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Morello?
Yes.
Chairman Estes?
Yes.
Resolution is memorialized.
Next case is review of submission waivers for the following, case number SP 924, First and Nine Plaza, preliminary site plan to remove existing dwellings and construct a two-story retail and office building, US Highway 9 and First Street.
Make the motion.
First and Nine, are they here? You're up. Gerald Sonnenbach, attorney for the applicant, First and Nine Plaza, for some waivers. Sworn in? Did you swear on it?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and any of the truth?
I do.
I'll swear in our board's professionals also. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and any of the truth? Okay, also, if you just state and spell your name for the record.
It's Graham McFarlane, M-A-C-F-A-R-L-A-N-E, professional engineer with the firm of Professional Design Services in Thomas River.
There are five checklist items that the applicant has requested waivers for, Mr. McFarlane. Can you just go through them real quick, or Mr. Peters can comment afterwards? You can do this real quick.
Yes, they're spelled on Mr. Peters' letter as item number eight. The first one we're seeking waiver from is environmental impact assessment. The reason that this site is already developed, it is the subject of a prior approval, I believe, in 2005. We're only seeking preliminary site plan approval at this time.
Could you identify just for the board where this is located, so at least they have a clue?
Sure. The site is located along Route 9 at the intersection of First Street, the northbound side of Route 9, as shown on our site plan, which was submitted...
And we're proposing a what? We're proposing a what?
We're proposing a two-story office, select retail building of about 14,000 square feet with the associated site improvements that you can see on the plan.
And utilities?
And utilities. The site does have a utility, a sewer extension going down from First Street to Third Street to provide gravity service to the site, as well as some other properties that front along Route 9, potentially.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Peters.
Mr. McFarlane, is the site currently developed?
Yes, there are two single-family homes on the site currently.
Mr. Chairman, this is normally, I hate to start off on a wrong, but this is a policy issue for the board. And I ask you something, if I stood here and said, "We don't need it," because I'm familiar with the site, Mr. Vislacki would probably jump me. By getting into any of the detail of the application, it's a site that has an approval from three years ago. It's a site that currently contains two abandoned houses. To the extent the board feels that information is necessary prior to deeming the application complete, we approve or deny the waiver. If the board grants a submission waiver, the applicant understands that if during the course of the public hearing, we find the need to have this information, the applicant's gonna have to go get it, bring it back, and they're gonna have to continue the hearing.
We understand. Mr. McFarlane?
Yes, the second item is a checklist of 26A, description of machinery, operations, products, byproducts, which are just not applicable to this proposed use, which is a, like I said, office and retail use. Next item is similar, is number of shifts and number of employees. Again, this is a preliminary application for office and retail, not for any industrial type use. Tenants are not identified at this time, as we are just seeking approval for the space. The plan is complying with the zone requirement, so we would, you'll be asked not to provide the information, number of shifts and employees, as we certainly just cannot provide that information at this time. Item 62, location, dimension of off-street loading areas, we would be seeking a waiver from providing a loading area with this particular application. The next item is preliminary architectural plans. Again, this is an application for preliminary approval only. There are some variances and design waivers associated with the project. We would like to get feedback from the board on those variances and waivers, which are fundamental to the success of the project. So we're asking that architectures can be deferred until final approval, if we are successful in obtaining the preliminary.
Again, this is one of those chicken or the egg things. There's always a concern about what types of uses. So are we gonna model the parking after the uses, or the uses after the parking?
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable granting that request at all, so...
The architectural?
Nope. We need to see something.
We'll present an architectural plan at the time of preliminary. So you're not looking for a 8E that... You're not looking for a waiver from a 8E?
Well, if the full board feels that we have to provide architecturals, then we'll have to provide them.
We'll provide certainly a front elevation, so everybody will see what it's gonna look like, at the very least, front and side.
Well, yeah, Mr. Chairman, the item is preliminary architectural plans, including floor plans and elevations.
Not just an elevation.
Yes, sir.
They're complete architecturals.
You have to have some idea before preliminary. I mean, we can't wait till final to see what the final product is gonna be, because normally, before this board, preliminary plans come before this board. We look at them, based on comments from the board and the public, they're modified, and then at final, the final modified plans are brought before the board.
No problem, we'll provide it. Thank you.
Then in item number nine, Mr. Peters...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I might, as it relates to comments 9A through 9E, our office takes no exception, or 9A through 9F, we take no exception to the grant of the waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete, with the same caveat. The applicant understands if we need the information at the public hearing, at the time of the public hearing, we're gonna have to stop, go home, get the information, come back. We're gonna need a time extension to decide the application, probably. But again, for the purposes of deeming the application complete, we take no exception to checklist items 9A through 9F in our report of May 19.
Okay. No further comments, right? All right. Any comments from any board members? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to move this.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
You have to give me a motion, Mr. Morello, please.
A motion that we approve this, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Morello and Mr. Burgess.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, the only item that's listed in our report that they're not getting a waiver from are the architect plans.
That's correct.
They're gonna get it for checklist items 17, 26A, 26C, 30, 32, 37, 41, 48, 50, and 62. They're gonna provide checklist item number 68.
Thank you. Mr. Burgess, and Mr. Morello and Mr. Burgess.
Okay, Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazee?
Yes.
Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislacki?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Morello?
Yes.
Chairman Estes?
Yes.
Waivers are granted.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next case, preliminary and final site plan and Woodlands management plan, case number SP 897, application of Blue Moon Hotel, as applicant and owner, seeking preliminary and final site plan and Woodlands management to demolish existing motel, associated structures, and remove all existing paved areas, and construct a two-story retail office building and a two-story building in the HD1 zone on premises known as Block 7810, lots 28 and 29, Route 9 South, I'm sorry, lots 26 and 28, Route 9 South, was partially heard on April 17, 2008, and has been adjourned for this hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Salvatore Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant.
Good evening.
We, as you just indicated, we were here, I wasn't here, my partner was here, but we were here a while back, and we presented full professional testimony to address the application and many of the board's comments. After that meeting, or during the course of that meeting, the board raised several issues that they were concerned about. We've since submitted revised plans in an effort to address as many of those concerns as possible. We've addressed all of the concerns that we could address and to continue to maintain the economic feasibility of this project. Keep in mind that what we're trying to bring to the town is a project that's consistent with the quality growth that's taking place on Route 9 and replace what we consider a use and a building that is not consistent with that, which is the hotel that's currently there. To my left and your right, there are four boards that are mounted on the wall, two of which were marked at the previous meeting, and I believe it's the top two. We have three new exhibits that we're going to mark during the course of our testimony, and the witnesses that we have so far tonight have all been sworn and qualified at the last meeting. I don't know if you redo anything with them, or...
No, you remain under oath.
So Mr. Khashoggi is the planning, is the engineer who designed the project from RC Associates. Would you mind marking these exhibits for us, and then we can discuss them as we go?
Sure.
I believe we're up to A13.
A13 is the floor plans and elevations of the retail building prepared by DMR.
What is that, A13?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Floor plans and elevations. Revision date, 6408. A14 is the floor plans and elevations.
Thank you. A14 is...
Can you close that door, please?
Floor plans and elevations of the medical and general office building, prepared by DMR, having the same date, 6408. And A15 is a colored copy of the layout sheet, prepared by RC Associates, last revised, 51408.
Joe, start with A13 and explain to the board what has changed or how they differ from the two exhibits that are immediately above it.
A13 and A14 were revised to provide a brick facade. Previously, during our testimony, we provided these renderings that showed a brick facade for both the retail office building and the general and medical office building. However, the architecturals did not provide the same facade treatment. They've been revised now to provide that brick.
The floor plans themselves have not changed, though?
That is correct.
Okay. Since the last meeting, you revised your site plan and made various revisions. Would you describe, summarize what those revisions were?
Sure. As discussed at the previous hearing, there were a number of concerns, so we've made a number of changes to the plan. The first change was the identification sign located along the front edge on Highway nine. We've revised that to provide a twenty-foot setback from Route nine. Previously, we were asking for a ten-foot setback, which created a waiver condition. We've eliminated that waiver. The second revision is the depth of the parking stalls. It was discussed that a nineteen-foot-deep parking stall is required by the town. We provided nineteen-foot-deep parking stalls throughout the project, specifically, the two aisles along the front of the retail building, as well as the aisles in the rear of the office building have been increased to nineteen feet, to meet the requirement. The aisles in this general area have remained the same, as well as in the rear, and we do submit, as we did previously, and our traffic engineer will get into this further, that we allow for an overhang of vehicles on a significant amount of the parking throughout the project elsewhere. Therefore, providing greater than sixty percent of the parking would allow for a nineteen-foot-deep stall, allow for a car overhang. We've also reduced the curb face to a five-inch Belgian block curb. That does two things. First of all, it was discussed whether concrete curb would provide the aesthetics requested by the ordinance. So, in lieu of concrete, we've decided to go with Belgian, Belgian block, and we've reduced the face to help facilitate that vehicle overhang, as discussed previously. We've widened the entrance off of Route nine and increased the curb radii. Previously, the entrance had fifteen-foot curb radii and was twenty-four feet wide. We've now increased that to twenty-eight feet, and increased the curb radii to twenty-five and forty-five feet, and decreased, or increased the radii into the site, the reverse curve, basically opening up this area, creating a much smoother transition from the highway into the site. The access aisle, leading from that entrance to the rear of the site, has been increased to twenty-six-foot width, which continues all the way to the back, or the back of the office building here, where it then tapers down to twenty-five and twenty-four feet. The primary mode of entering the site from Route nine follows this main aisle here, is twenty-six feet, all the way back to the office. These areas here, to the rear of it, are purely for access to additional parking stalls. We revised the loading area in the center of the two buildings here. We flipped it to the opposite side, closer to the retail building. It provides more efficient loading to the retail use, as that would provide a lot more frequency in loading than the office would. It also provides for better circulation. We changed the one-way direction entering out, northward, allowing loading to come into the site, circle around the building, and enter the loading area, and then they would exit, making it right onto the main access aisle, and head out. The circulation is better, and it gives us, it's better for larger vehicles to be able to access the site. We provided planting diamonds throughout the parking area, as requested previously. In total, we provided thirteen planting islands, as can be seen here on the plan. Each one will be planted with a tree, and have five-inch curbing, and has been designed to allow for parking in all the stalls adjacent to the diamond. We've relocated the refuse enclosure to this area here, which is approximately thirty feet from the general medical office building, and forty feet from the retail building. And we've also eliminated the parallel parking stalls that were located in the loading zone area here, to help facilitate better circulation through the loading area. That's, in general, a summary of the changes we've made thus far.
The application itself remains variance-free, is that correct?
That is correct.
There are still certain design waivers that are being requested. Were there any new design waivers?
No new design waivers that I'm aware of.
And most of the design waivers we discussed at the last hearing, but I wanna just emphasize a couple, because those were the areas of concern. And the first was the width of the circulation aisle, which you just described, we'll probably leave that for our other professionals, so they can give a little more detail as to why we believe that is adequate.
That's correct.
The number of parking spaces, we're still seeking that waiver, is that correct?
Correct.
Would you, although that'll be another traffic comment, would you at least describe what we're seeking?
We're seeking two-hundred-and-seventy-six parking stalls, where three-hundred-and-ten stalls are required. The amount of parking has been reduced from the previous request by one stall.
And that parking mix is because of the mix of medical office and retail, they each have different parking requirements?
That is correct. The parking requirements for each of the three uses varies, the medical having the most amount of parking required, and that's what creates the waiver condition.
And then the last waiver I'd like you to discuss is the parking in front of the retail building, meaning the parking on the Route nine side of the building.
Due to the shape of the lot, specifically having the Young's appliance piece cut out, it makes it very difficult to design this site to provide all parking in the rear. The majority of parking is provided in the rear of the office building, this parking to rear and side of the office building, and this is the primary parking for the office building. The parking located in the front yard setback is generally for the retail use, and is typical to retail use in the area and along Route nine.
At the last hearing, the sidewalk along Route nine was also discussed, the sidewalk width specifically.
Correct.
And we had agreed to match a neighboring...
We had agreed to match the width provided at the Sonic, located just north of the property, and we still do agree to maintain that width. The requirement in the ordinance is twelve feet. It was discussed at that meeting that Sonic did not provide twelve, but they provided greater than six. We weren't sure exactly what it was. Whatever that width is, we'll discuss it with the board's professionals, and match that width along Route nine.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Peters. If I might, we're in the process of performing resolution compliance for Sonic. We've received two letters from the applicant's attorney, indicating that DOT would not allow within their right-of-way sidewalks wider than four feet. There was some discussion after the first resubmission to the state about making it wider than four feet in areas near bus stops or traffic drop-off areas. The second comments that came back from the applicant's attorney, or through the applicant's attorney from DOT, said four feet's all DOT is going to allow within their right-of-way. So, unless the planning board or the township want to get involved in the application, the design standard that's permitted by DOT is going to be four feet.
Thank you.
Again, we'll comply with whatever those standards are. And then, Joe, a couple of quick last items. The first is, I just lost my spot. Okay, sidewalks, we just did. The other is, there were six spots that were potentially blocked near the loading zone. Those are gonna be limited for employee parking only?
That's correct. We remain to provide six parking stalls here, against the loading area and behind the retail building. Those are intended as employee parking only. We revise the plans to sign them accordingly. But they are for the employees, therefore, they shouldn't be in conflict with the loading and unloading of the site.
And one last question, and that is the technical comments which are contained in the CMA report of May thirtieth, oh-eight, and its technical comment, Technical Engineering Review Five. The applicant has agreed to comply with all of those comments and address them to the board's engineer satisfaction?
That is correct. We have no objections, and we'll make all those revisions.
That's all the engineering testimony we have, Mr. Chair. Do you want to...
Mr. Chairman, if I could jump in, before they get finished with their direct...
Yes.
A review of the outside agency approvals, your concurrence to comply with them, or the status of those applications, please.
We've made submission to Freehold Soil Conservation District, and received a review. We will make, be addressing that review in the near future. We've received a review from the Howell Township MUA, and a recommendation of preliminary sanitary sewer approval, as well as a recommendation for preliminary water approval. We've submitted to the Monmouth County Planning Board. We're waiting comments. We will need to make submission to the DEP regarding an absence of presence, as was discussed at the previous hearing. We've received comments from the Monmouth County Board of Health, and we'll address those comments. We need to make submission to the DOT for access permit. We've not, we've not made that submission at this point. We do have comments from the Howell Shade Tree Commission, which we'll address, as well as the Environmental Commission. The Environmental Commission specifically had questions regarding the signage and the existence, or the old sign to remain. We've now revised that, so those comments will go away. Howell Township Police Department had no comment, and Howell Fire Prevention has comments pending, which we'll address.
Thank you very kindly.
Do you want us to present all the witnesses, or do you, does the board have specific questions?
No, I would like to know if there's any board members that have any specific questions for the engineer.
Can you just clarify on the map there? It looks like the parking lot to Young's appliance has been opened up to connect to yours, and that wasn't on the previous plans?
No, it was not opened up. It was, it's kind of a combination of a drafting error, and they have some gravel, storage, garbage, whatnot in that area. When coloring it, the draftsman made it pavement, but that's not the case.
Mr. Vizlaki?
Can you say, explain to me why a thirty-foot entrance, which is part of the requirements, and I know that the fire department always requests that for commercial, a thirty-foot entrance into the, why that can't be provided?
Well, I believe we have...
Yeah, Mr. Vizlaki, we have a witness who would, if the question is why it can't be provided, or why we don't think it's necessary, that's...
Well, I mean, that's the standard. I just wanna know why you're deviating from the standard, and I'm concerned, because that's one of the requirements that our fire officials recommend for any commercial two-story development.
We have a witness who will address that specifically.
I'll wait for...
We'll bring him next, so there's continuity.
Mr. Alfieri, do you have a DOT access permit for that?
We do not have one yet. We have to apply for one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Sayah.
Then, I would have a question, if I may. The handicap parking?
Yes.
You have that split between the two facilities, the retail and the medical?
That's correct. We have, we provide...
So, you're adequate for both?
That's correct. We meet the requirements. The handicap parking, we have three parking, three handicap parking stalls in front of the retail, meeting the retail and office requirement in this building, and we have a number, it's fifteen parking stalls along the front here, that's generated due to the medical office, requires a greater amount of handicap parking.
Great. And then, Ernie, on a follow-up to that, then, our law enforcement has permission to go in there and ticket for those violators who park in handicap spots?
That's called an agreement for Title thirty-nine, which the applicant would have to file.
We would agree to that.
Would you agree to that? Very good. Thank you very much. That's all, Mr. Chairman, for me.
Any other questions for this witness? Thank you.
I'd like to call Jerry Naylis. He's a new witness, so we're gonna have to swear him in.
Mr. Naylis, do you swear or affirm the testimony about giving this board the truth, the whole truth, anything about the truth?
I do.
Mr. Naylis, would you present to the board your professional credentials?
Sure. Why don't I start with the spelling of the name? First name Gerard, G-E-R-A-R-D, middle initial J, last name is Naylis, N-A-Y-L-I-S, twenty-one South Taylor Street, Bergenfield.
By whom are you employed, Mr. Naylis?
Technical Fire Services. I'm the, I'm one of the partners.
And would you place your credentials as a expert? We're seeking to have you qualified as an expert in fire safety issues.
Sure. My bachelor's degree is in fire science from Jersey City State College. I have a master's degree in administrative science from Fairleigh Dickinson University. I was a career firefighter for ten years with the Atlantic City Fire Department, and have been a volunteer firefighter for over thirty-five years in my town of Bergenfield, having held all ranks within the fire department.
We'll accept your credentials, they're fine. Thank you.
Mr. Naylis, we asked you to get involved in this application, because the local ordinance says that the access aisle has to be thirty feet in width, and it's a different standard than what we're used to in a lot of communities, and I believe it's different than the regulations that you are familiar with. Can you describe what we're proposing, whether it's adequate, and whether it conforms with other regulations other than the local ordinance?
Certainly. The current uniform fire code in New Jersey requires a minimum eighteen-foot fire lane. However, I will tell you that that is about to change. The state is going through the process of adopting the two-thousand-and-six edition of the International Fire Code, so that it marries up with the International Building Code, which is used in New Jersey as the construction code. That will migrate up to twenty feet in width, and they're changing the term from fire lane, actually, to emergency vehicle access roadway. Additionally, there is a section that states when there is a fire hydrant located or situated on an emergency access roadway, that the width then must be twenty-six feet. Or, if it's a dead end, that it also must be twenty-six feet.
And the widths that we are proposing for the access aisle, and then the internal circulation lanes, well, first of all, the main access aisle, does that conform to those standards?
Yes, it does.
And in terms of the internal circulation lanes, are they, in your opinion, are they adequate for fire safety vehicles to gain access to the site if necessary?
Yes, referring to the layout plan, which is, I believe, A fifteen, what I've seen is that the narrowest point is twenty-six feet, which would comply with, even if there were hydrants mandated or situated along this roadway. The narrow point is a little over twenty-four feet between the two buildings, which, again, complies.
Now, sir, these standards, is those the minimum, or is that the actual recommended size?
That's actually, it's the minimum and the recommended, the language in the IFC is recommended. I can also say that, in my experience, looking at other plans from throughout the state, in the past, it's, they've typically gone to eighteen, and in some cases, they have gone to twenty feet. The largest that I've seen thus far is actually twenty-four feet, and this is, on the one side, actually slightly larger than that, by being twenty-six at the choke point. At the entranceway, I believe the measurement is twenty-eight feet, if I'm not mistaken, which would allow for adequate swing for even an aerial apparatus. I'm not a hundred percent sure how large your apparatus in Howell is, but on a representative sampling of an aerial device, which typically has a length of between fifty-five and fifty-seven feet in length, you would have a wheelbase of between forty-five and forty-seven feet, and you would be able to make the turn from the top, again, referring to A fifteen, if you were coming into the property and you had to make a turn going in this direction, a left turn, you would have adequate radii and be able to make the turn with an aerial device, which typically is the largest piece of apparatus that the fire department would respond in. And certainly, because you have access on all four sides of the rear building, it's an even better improvement.
Yeah, I do know the Southern Fire Department did acquire a new ladder truck, I think, just within the last year or last year, so I think it's like a two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight model, so I don't know what the wheelbase is, but I know it's relatively new.
Mm-hmm. Again, typically, I'm fairly up to speed on size of apparatus.
Okay.
Typically, you're looking at eight and a half feet wide now, because of mirrors and real-world jut-outs and things like that, so you're looking at eight and a half feet wide, and typically fifty-five to fifty-seven feet, depending on where cabinetry is placed. So, worst-case scenario is you're looking at a fifty-seven-foot length with about a forty-seven-foot wheelbase, because these apparatus have a hangover in the rear and a hangover in the front, because the wheels are behind the cab.
Right, I said, I hope we never have to use them, but I would be able to make sure that it could get in and out.
Does anybody have any questions for this witness?
I have one, Mr. Chair. If I'm reading the drawings correctly, you're including the loading zone in the measurement of the access lane?
The loading zone here?
Yes. So, you're including the loading zone, so what if there's a truck parked there? What if that truck is on fire? How does a fire truck get in there?
Well, actually, if there's, if the truck itself is on fire, you're not going to pull next to it. When you fight a vehicle fire, you actually want to position the apparatus approximately a hundred feet away, so you wouldn't pull into there.
But technically, you are including the loading zone in that measurement of the twenty-four feet?
Yes, that's the way I see the plan.
Are there any other questions?
But you do, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
But you do have access on three complete other sides of the building as well.
And it is twenty-four feet at its narrowest?
That's correct.
Any other questions for this witness?
Mr. Chair, I just have one. Mr. Naylis, the international, or the national code that you referenced before, they permit calculating the loading area when you're measuring the width?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have one last witness, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Scott.
Thank you.
State your name for the record, please, even though you testified at the last meeting.
Scott Kell, with McDonough and Ray Associates.
Scott, a few points I want to touch on that relate to traffic, and you were qualified as a traffic expert at the last meeting as well, were you not?
That's correct.
Parking. I know you provided testimony to justify the parking waiver that's being sought, but I'd like to just highlight again what the purpose, what the reasoning behind it was.
Well, the reasoning, as I stated at the last meeting, has to do with a number of factors, including the number, type of uses we have on-site that have different... factors, including the number, type of uses we have on-site that have different peak parking periods. Also, the parking rates that are in the municipal ordinance are excessive when compared to national standards in our experience. As I indicated previously, relative to a medical office space, the ordinance requires 6.7 spaces per 1,000 square feet, where anywhere from 4 to 4.5 is acceptable, and even more so in a building of this size where you have approximately 21,000 square feet dedicated to medical office use, because you're going to have multiple practitioners that typically have offices elsewhere in the community and have varying office hours, as well as a lot of common space within the building. From my experience, this parking rate is more appropriate for a smaller, single practitioner that has, say, a 3,000 or 4,000 square foot building, has a waiting room, and very little common space, and whereas this building, you'll have multiple practitioners. Then there is references made to the parking rate for the retail use. Again, the municipal ordinance is 6.7 parking space for 1,000 square feet. Based on my experience and personal experience with other shopping centers along the Route 9 corridor, we've done research counts at the power center, at the target lows, and found parking observations around the peak Christmas season, around three spaces per 1,000 square feet, and then even made observations other smaller neighborhood retail, which this would more be representative of, that, again, the parking demand would not exceed 4.0 per thousand, four spaces per 1,000 square feet. We did a calculation based on IT collected data and using the 85th percentile parking rates, determined that this site, without taking consideration for shared parking or the types of use, the varying uses of 240 spaces would be needed to support this, where we're providing 276. And I represent that the 310 spaces required by the ordinance is in excess of parking supply to support this development.
Your office also prepared a traffic statement since the last meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct. It was dated May 20, 2008.
And without getting into details, you've concluded that the accessway operates safely and efficiently?
That's correct.
And that the road, Route 9, has adequate capacity to handle the traffic generated from this project?
That's correct, and that'll also be subject to an NJ DOT access application, which will require the preparation of a more comprehensive traffic impact study that will also address the intersection of Kent Road to the south and New Friendship Road to the north.
And the internal circulation aisles, do they also operate safely and efficiently?
Yes. They'll be able to accommodate passenger vehicles as well as large wheelbase vehicles that will be serving the site.
So all the testimony we have, this witness, Mr. Chair, and that's all the testimony we have for the application. We're prepared to answer any questions the board or the public may have.
Does anybody have any questions for this witness?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just want to bring up a comment, or if anything. I wasn't at the last hearing. I did read the minutes, and I know that the design standards were talked about extensively. I know the applicant has met with the brick facade and stuff, but my concern, this is the first time I'm actually seeing the actual structure, and I was wondering, I know that the bump outs, which are design standards, point out, but my concern is like the roof line. The whole thing just looks real boxy. Nothing really, you know, to make it look kind of attractive, especially on our Route 9 corridor. We have some new buildings that are coming up. We had just approved, what was it, Ashley Furniture, that really has a nice facade, and just wondering if anything could be done to dress up the facade of this, of this building. I mean, it's just, it just looks like a big box, and I hate to say it, the roof line just looks kind of ugly.
I can't answer that. But Nick, first state your name, so the record's clear, please.
Nicholas Scraviano.
Is there something we could do with, you're talking about for the office building?
I think mostly the roof line, the building that's going to face Route 9, the thing that, you know, you know, the roof line is, just looks like a square, it just looks, there's no peaks or anything in the front of the roof line. There's nothing to distinguish it, it's just, it just looks like a box.
That's the rendering to our right. Everybody's right.
Yeah, I believe that's, that's what you would see coming down Route 9.
That's correct.
The building in the back, you know, it's a long, you know, who's really going to see that? I'm talking about aesthetics for our Route 9 corridor. I mean, I know in the past, there's been some ugly stuff on Route 9. We want to turn away from that.
We agree.
Try to make things look more attractive, more professional, you know, and try to give it some kind of features or characteristics instead of just a straight, whatever, so...
Can we do that?
Yeah, what we could do, what we could do is definitely provide some variations in the roof line in that building on the top to provide a little bit more design features from Route 9. We did, we do provide a bump out. We can enhance that a little bit and maybe, maybe provide some elevation variation on that front facade.
Mr. Chair? The top rendering, was the old rendering?
No, that's the other building.
That's the other building that's facing Route 9. There's the back building. The building that's in the rear is that side. That's the building that's facing Route 9. There's two buildings.
Well, this, this detail on the top of the roof, that's the back building?
It's the front building.
Now, let me, I'll just describe, describe the various renderings and floor plans that are up there. The, going from the right, the top right rendering is an artist's rendering of the proposed retail and office building that will be visible from Route 9.
Well, what is that? So those light features, or what do you call those?
That's just the roof separation that articulates the roof line. That is a different material from the actual brick facade. It is done to add a little bit of, you know, architectural design features on that facade.
Well, I just noticed that, I noticed that his peak is running along the whole, what would I say, the whole horizontal length of the building, instead of like, the peaks maybe could have been on the, on the front facade or something. I mean, I don't care if it's like a flat roof there, but just to give it some kind of...
See, that isn't a flat roof.
Yeah, but where are your mechanicals then? But you, but I see a, I see a peak. You have a peak towards the front, but it's running the whole length of the building instead of your peaks running or something like...
We could do some false stormers, something to that effect, if that pleases the board.
Just wanted something to look a little bit aesthetically, you know, attractive, instead of looking like an office building, it's an office building trying to hide retail. You know, it doesn't look as much as a retail. I can understand, the back building's a professional medical building, and that, that looks appropriate. I was just in one today, and that looks appropriate. The front wanting to be retail and some office could be, I think, made a little bit more attractive to entice, you know, the Route 9 corridor. I mean, that's my, that's my opinion. If other board members have something different, you know, chime in.
Mr. Tantillo, you have a comment?
Yeah. I like the facade, and I like the looks of the building. Mr. Vislacki don't like it. That's his opinion. I think, you know, rather than carry this thing on, why don't we just take a poll of everybody on the board and save a lot of time?
I prefer to finish the testimony before we do that.
Well, I thought he meant with regard to Kurt's comments.
We can do that. That's not a problem.
Just as a something, I don't know, would compromise to everybody, and it was suggested put a couple false stormers up there. I think if you put two or three false stormers up there, it would break up that continuous flow with the roof.
Is that something that, is that something that the applicant will look at?
That's fine, sure.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know if...
I don't know if Mr. Tantillo likes that.
Mr. Tantillo, is that, are you in agreement with that?
I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm saying if he were to put two or three false stormers on that roof, maybe as a compromise to the...
I don't, I don't see why they should, you know, I don't see any change in it at all. I mean, my doctor's building, there's about 22 doctors in the building.
But really, the front building is not a doctor's office, it's a retail. The back building's the doctor's office.
Right. I understand that. But the whole unit itself, I think it's attractive. I really do. They got a great facade on it. You want to change the roof line. Looking at that building facing Route 9, all the structural walls are facing front to back. That's why that roof line is peaked the way it is. You can't peak it the other way. If you peak it the other way, what's going to hold the walls up? I mean, you have beams going one way, you have to put your roof line the other way.
One other item to clear that up is, you know, the rendering that you see before you really doesn't do the material that we would use for the roof any justice. We wouldn't do a, you know, a regular shingle or something along those lines. It would be, you know, a decorative-style roofing material such as shingle or maybe some form of decorative metal, something along those lines.
I think the stormers would make it look nice.
We'll put some in.
Okay. Good. Let's move on to the next point. Are there any other questions for this witness?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I know you guys have an unconforming lot there, and in the interest of conformity and trying to spruce up Route 9, was there, just out of curiosity, ever any approach made to Young's Appliance about buying that property and bringing them into the project and building a store for them?
Yes, the owners of the parcel did have some discussions with the owners of Young Appliance, and to my knowledge, the number that was requested from them was rather excessive compared to the actual value of the site.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have one last thing in the back of my mind that I'd like to clear up. Back at the medical facility, the building that sits in the back, you got practitioners, medical practitioners, you know, you get a patient that's not feeling well, you call the ambulance. Where does the ambulance come in and load up that, that patient so that they can be carried to an emergency facility?
Well, again, we have a series of handicap parking stalls on the front that provide a lot of opportunities. It's my opinion, we've provided more handicap parking than we need, again, because of medical use, and there'll be a lot of opportunities for ambulance along that front edge...
Very good.
...to provide access.
Any other comment, questions?
My only comment, Mr. Chair, is I would just feel personally a little uncomfortable with the layout until our fire department has a chance to review it and reviews the new standards that are going to go in place.
I think the fire department has reviewed it, and I'm sure they're familiar with the state standards.
My only comment to that is that, you know, they, they generally, you know, expect to have 30 feet, so we had some testimony. I think we need to make a decision based on that testimony, one way or the other. I don't think bringing this back to the fire department and delaying the application is going to, is going to serve us well.
In my experience with the fire officials, and they're all, they do a great job, is that the regulations say 30, that's what they want. Why should they say, "We'll take less"? They'll say, "That's the board's decision, not my decision."
That's correct. Do you have any other testimony to present this out, Fury?
No, sir.
Do I, do I have any other comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, I'll make one comment.
Yes.
Just from the last meeting we had with this applicant, I just want to commend them that they've come, you know, to meet our design standards. We had a lot of concerns, and they, they really did work to do that. We all know what's, what's there now, that this is a vast improvement, and I'd just like to thank you guys for just trying to work with us with our first meeting. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'd like to open this up to the public.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Before or after the public, I have one item that needs reviewing.
Before the public.
We had a comment as it relates to the overflow for the proposed storm drainage system discharging to an undefined point. I don't recall we've heard any testimony with regards to that comment.
I did have a chance to review that comment. The overflow from the site will flow along an existing swell along the property line adjacent to the residential and the Wawa site, which was recently subdivided, and there's a subdivision being proposed in this area. In fact, the Freehold Soil Conservation District has asked the same question. We will be providing them and the board professionals more specific information with regard to the existing grades and swelling through this area, and we'll be providing the calculations requested by both your engineer and Freehold soils with regard to erosion through that area.
Mr. Chairman, that's a specific comment in our technical report, which they had agreed to. Unfortunately, as you know, sometimes in the effort to move things along, we agree to everything, and then we say, "Well, we can't do it." I just needed that one to be on the record because it does affect residential property. It's been there for 20 years, and as long as they meet the Freehold soil standards, we should be okay. But as it's designed now, it may not, and it could negatively impact someone, so if they have agreed to that, I appreciate the board's time.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comment? Seeing none, I'd like to open this application up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment or question anybody who testified? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and come back to the board. One last time, are there any comments or questions regarding this application?
No, I think we've heard Ernie's comments. Jennifer, do you have anything to add?
No, they, the applicant has addressed all the comments that we had put in our letter.
Thank you.
Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion on this application for approval.
So moved.
Second... Mr. Chair, I just have one question. Did the board reach a decision on whether the false stormers would be used or whether what you see now is what was studied?
We came to a decision that false stormers would be used.
Okay.
That was Mr. Burgess and Mr. Tantillo.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Frazee?
Yes.
Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislacki?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Morello?
Yes.
Chairman Estvez?
Yes.
Application's approved.
Thank you, everyone.
Good luck. Thank you.
I'm going to take a 10-minute break.
The board will now reconvene.
Thank you. Next case, preliminary major subdivision and preliminary site plan approval, case number SD 2930 and SP 914, application of Boulder Ridge 2 at Howell LLC as applicant and John Sorkin as owner seeking preliminary major subdivision and preliminary site plan to develop the property as a mixed-use development consisting of 177 lots, 172 age-restricted, one commercial development, one recreation clubhouse lot, two stormwater management lots, and one open space lot in the HD3 zone on premises known as Block 183 lots 10901, 10902, 110, 111, and 112, Route 33. The application was partially heard on January 10, 2008, February 7, 2008, and May 1, 2008. Eligible voters are Burgess, Snyder, Tantillo, Vislacki, Nikastro, Clark, Dalton, Morello, Estvez. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for an opening statement. As I think we got it right, but we'll find out from you guys in a few minutes.
And, and Mr. Sayah's eligible. He signed his service case.
Thank you. You sure about Mr. Sayah?
Yeah, we'll, we'll let him vote.
Mr. Euro. Mr. Euro is our engineer. He's been sworn in before. He's admitted, continuing to swear in, right, Mr. Attorney?
He's... You say yourself still under oath.
Right on. If you would, we have three new exhibits. Would you just mark those, and then you'll go through your testimony, Mr. Euro's, point out the exhibits, and I think we'll go by the numbers. I think we ended at...
We're up to A-24. Thank you.
Do you have an exhibit list, Jerry?
Yes, I do.
Exhibit A-24 to my left is a color two-dimensional rendering of the overall site plan that we'll be discussing this evening. It's part of the revised plan package that was submitted to the board, prepared by my office, and which was last revised May 13, 2008. Exhibit A-25 to my left is a, again, it's color two-dimensional rendering. It's an enlargement of the commercial area of the application. And Exhibit A-26 on the lower right-hand side... And Exhibit A 26 on the lower right-hand side is, again, a colored two-dimensional rendering of the clubhouse area and enlarged blow-up area of the clubhouse.
Mr. Euro, if you would, as we concluded, we made some amendments to the plan. They have been reviewed. There has been a report by Birdsall and by CME. And would you go through the board, would you go through the revisions for the board, and I'm sure they'll recall, as you go through them, how they reference to their last comments?
Okay. At the last hearing, there were discussions and concerns about various amenities and additional landscaping, walking paths, et cetera. So, the, outside of addressing a lot of the technical issues that were raised by both the engineer and the planner, some of them were cosmetic or surface features that were revised focused primarily on the commercial area and the clubhouse area. I'm going to focus on Exhibit A 25 to my left, the commercial area. Couple of things that have happened in this area was, we've provided a loading zone at the rear of the retail buildings. By doing that, we've eliminated several parking spaces to bring the total parking count down to 257. Mr. Kennel, our traffic engineer, will go into further testimony on that. We've also provided a second dumpster enclosure further to the, would be to the east. So, now there are three dumpster enclosures located in the commercial area, two of them primarily for the retail buildings, and then, again, the third one located in the, just west of the two-story office building. On the retail buildings, the canopies that we're projecting out into the sidewalk areas have been pulled back, which have allowed us to do additional plantings on both the front and rear portions. We have an additional eight shade trees located along the front and eight shade trees along the back. We've provided additional plantings, foundation plantings along the foundation of the building. We've also provided some benches and trash receptacles, et cetera, in that area, as well as a bicycle rack at the commercial building. With regards to the clubhouse area, there was significant discussion about additional walking paths, et cetera. As you can see on Exhibit A 26 to my left, we have provided a woodchip path that circulates, it's a curaceous path throughout the entire open space area around the clubhouse. We have also provided connection points, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, or 7 connection points to the proposed sidewalk along the street network. We're also proposed an additional ornamental feature, whether it's a fountain, a statue, et cetera, which is to be located right at the intersection of Road C and Road A, near the parking field. That feature will be provided by my client. And we've also added additional, some additional landscaping in the area, as well as a bicycle rack also.
And in conversation with the planner and with CME, it was suggested that perhaps we could connect through the detention area or the wetland area. Jennifer Beaman, Mark, what are we going to, take a look and see if we can do it, if the DEP would permit it?
Yes, Exhibit A 24 to my left, in addition to the walking paths in the clubhouse area, we've also provided a walking path in the southeast corner of the property near the easterly entrance. You can see it, it was in the area where the buffers used to be that got reduced recently. So, right behind the first 8 to 10 homes, we provide, again, a woodchipped walking path. Around all of these walking paths, there are benches and other areas for people to take a rest if they'd want to. And as Mr. Sonnenbach had just mentioned, based on some discussions with your professionals, we are going to look at the possibility of providing some sort of a path through the center core wetland area. Right now, there may be some ways to snake something through there, and we will discuss that with the DEP as part of the application to the state.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to get off on the wrong foot, but we are, we aren't, we're going to come back at final and talk about it. I don't know how we're going to include that in a resolution.
As subject, I would say, Mr. Peters, if I can, as the attorney, that it could be included that the applicant will submit a plan to you and to the DEP for a woodchip walkway through the center, and if approved, it will be part of it. So, it could be a condition of approval.
Some of the other items that have been added to the plan, there were some discussions about fencing, guide rail, et cetera, referring to Exhibit A 24. At the, in the curve of Road A, just to the west of the clubhouse area, there were some steep slopes. So, we've provided a guide rail in this area to protect the motorists, as well as some benches along that stretch of vacant property where there are no homes. We provided additional fencing and guide rail in the areas of the two detention basins that flank the east and the west of the wetland area. One of the other primary features that has been added to the plan is a signage wall/fence combination. All of the detention basins are going to be wrapped with a, as we discussed, a split rail fence with the low mesh fencing on the bottom. We've also incorporated a bit of a wall design that's going to incorporate some of the signage. And if you would refer to Page 61 of 62, you can get a feel for what the various signs, how they're going to be implemented in some of the walls at both the two entrance ways. One of the other items that had been included, it was a request with regards to some of our parking calculations, is that we did provide some additional data from the ITE manual regarding justification for our parking deficiency. Again, Mr. Kennel will go into that testimony a little bit further. And one of the other prime, and I apologize, I didn't mention it first, but there was significant discussion about pesticide testing that needed to be prepared. That information, testing was done by Melick Tully. Copies of the report were provided to the board for their review, have had received comments from the professionals. And I believe in just a quick review of that, even though it was not done by my office, but there was one boring that was identified to have some slight elevation of arsenic levels, and it's located behind the existing greenhouse. Melick Tully has already recommended that remediation take place, and that will be done in accordance with the DEP standards.
All technical comments from the reports, any problem with them and responding to them?
No, I have reviewed the technical items contained in both Mr. Peters' and Ms. Beaman's reports, and we will comply with the aspects of those comments.
And any problems from an engineering point of view from the planner's report?
No.
I have no further questions of this witness, and we'll be bringing Mr. Kennel to speak to the traffic issues immediately after Mr. Euro was finished.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Euro, as it relates to the DEP cleanup information, is that something the board's going to see at final?
I would say yes, if there's any letters or...
My concern is if there has to be cleanup, while the DEP says you need to do this, that, and the other thing, I don't think DEP much care, I shouldn't say this. I'm concerned that the residents of Howell Township shouldn't be negatively impacted by the procedures by which DEP says we clean the site up. So, to that end, I think the board's entitled to see how we're going to remediate the soil before we grant final. This is an application for preliminary.
No problem. Make it a condition.
Thank you.
Do we have, does anybody from the board have any questions for this witness?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Chair, we have a report marked May 30, 2008. We're good with everything in it except...
Bob, you just testified technically. On that report, everything is okay. What about the basic report from Page 1 to 7 or 8?
Well, I...
We're doing a consistent soil type. In other words, all of the issues have been discussed regarding drainage and soil type and alike with the township, the planning board engineer?
Yeah, Chair, that stuff's got to get on the record, please.
Okay. So, would you please tell us, Bob, on the record, what it is that we're doing with regard to the soil type in terms of drainage, and under the, whatever storm drainage that we have on the site?
Okay. Under the initial comments on Page 2, Item 1 is a statement, Item 2 is a statement. Item 3 is a statement indicating what has been changed on the plan. Item 4 are the various waivers that have been testified by Mr. Leff at the last hearing.
That's Item 5, I guess.
Item 4 and 5.
Right.
Item 6, again, just provide testimony that we are providing a loading space behind the retail building, and Mr. Kennel will provide additional testimony regarding the slight reduction in parking. Item 7 is a statement regarding the RECIS standards, that there are no, I believe, no de minimis exceptions being requested. Item 8A, excuse me?
Instead of going through 8A, unless Ernie wants you to, Mr. Peters wants you to, why don't you go for, with all of the issues with regard firstly to the drainage? We will represent to you that the road will be private, and the, so again, the management of the roadway recreation facility, security, internal transportation will be owned and maintained by a homeowners association. That's not an engineering thing, we're just making that statement. So, once again, if you would, Mr. Euro.
Item 8B, there was a request for some additional information regarding some swells along the easterly property line. We will provide that additional information to Mr. Peters to his satisfaction. Item C, regarding runoff in accordance with the stormwater regulations, Section 7, colon, 7A, dash, 511. We have spoken with Mr. Peters' office. We will provide him the necessary information. And we will also be filing, we have filed with the DEP, and they will be reviewing under those same sections for stormwater management, as well as the disturbance to the wetland areas for our outfall discharges.
And we're going to, the final application will come back when we have these issues resolved?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Item D regarding its consistency of soil, met with Mr. Peters' staff. And at this point, what we are providing is a overexcavation of soils in the areas, so that there is one foot of new Type B soils that'll be imported onto the site under all of our drainage pipes. And those calculations will be provided to Mr. Peters' office for his review. Item E, statement regarding some of the non-structural measures. We will provide any additional information to Mr. Peters' office. And it also is part of the DEP regulations. They are guidelines for trying to provide as many swales, non-point discharge points as possible. In accordance with the DEP review, we will provide any supplemental information to Mr. Peters' office. Item F, regards to the pump station, which will be provided at the time of final. Again, as previously testified, gravity sewer throughout our project, installing new gravity sewer westerly on Route 33 to our property line with the Mobile Home Park. It'll all drain to gravity to a proposed pump station on our property, which will be sized to handle regional flows. And then a force main will be constructed in a easterly direction to tie into existing sanitary sewer by the Shore Oaks Golf Course, or Eagle Oaks Golf Course, excuse me, on Titten Avenue.
And as we stated before, this would provide sanitary sewer for the Mobile Home Park to our west.
That is correct. Item 8G through N are traffic-related, and will be testimony provided by Mr. Kennel.
Well, are there any title issues as far as you know, relative to the apparent gap gore in the depicted onsite that's small?
No, there are no title issues that I'm aware of. This is a compilation of several properties that, should the board grant approval, they will be consolidated, and then an overall master subdivision plan will be provided, which will eliminate any gores or overlaps within the property boundaries.
No further questions of this witness?
Chair, the technical report, no problems there either?
That's what...
No problems with the technical report, Mr. Peters.
Does any board, do any board members have any questions for this witness?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo.
Mr. Euro, I just got one question. I don't even know if you can answer it. Can you tell me how many fire hydrants are true to whole development?
I do not recall how many, the number of hydrants, but we did receive a letter, excuse me, from the fire department approving the location of all the hydrants that are proposed.
They did approve.
Yes, we have approved.
And rejecting the application because it doesn't, they don't-
Okay.
-like RECIS standards.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Sir.
One thing I'd like clarification on is, you know, the 20-foot, 5-foot easement, I know, I've read all the testimony, and I'm comfortable with that, but I wanted to clarify, the setback from that, the setback from that easement is 25, an additional 25 feet?
It is whatever the rear setback is required, I believe it is, I don't recall offhand.
25 feet.
25 feet, but yes, the 25-foot rear yard setback is taken from the 25-foot buffer line. So, in essence, you are 50 feet from the rear property line for your building setback.
And then, another thought came to mind. I was wondering if you had a way of addressing it. There's a lot of wildlife back in the, I would almost call the Naval Weapons Station Earl a wildlife preserve, you know. So, homeowners here, they're going to be putting their garbage out, and, you know, you're going to have some animals that are trying to dig under the fence to get to that garbage and jump over that fence. I'm just thinking, just thinking out loud here, you know, have you considered, you know, you're right next to a, you know, 10,000 acres of wildlife.
Wildlife preserve. I represent, we won't get the deer that I get because I can't get through the fence, but I can't talk about badgers.
I guess some of the prior testimony that was discussed is, there will be full disclosure at the time of purchase to any potential buyer, that Naval Weapons Station Earl is to our rear. So, that's the first thing. All of the residential units are provided with two-car garages, which I would assume that people would keep their trash cans within those garages, and then pull them to the curb on trash day.
That's great. Thank you. Any other questions for this witness?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to go back to the last meeting where we discussed whether or not there was going to be a site identification sign. I know that there was a lot of confusion, yes we are, no we're not, so...
Yes, we have it in the plans.
Right. So, do you want to talk about, I know you have an architect that's going to talk about it?
Well, we have an architect here, and who can certainly show the plans. We have them in our new plans. They all meet code. We're not looking for any variances.
We're not looking for any variances. The signs are shown on Sheet 61 of 62, and they're a combination of almost a stone entryway, a stone entry sign with a wooden plaque that would be attached to it. They are, again, located at the two primary entrance ways. The entrance way to the, to the east, there's a setback around 40 feet off of the highway, but there are curved stone monument-type signs with the plaque of the residential neighborhood incorporated into it. And then, as well as the westerly entrance, where the traffic light will be, we have, again, the same type of feature. And we're also proposing the primary sign for the commercial part of it to be located at that same entrance. And again, both of these details are shown on Sheet 61 of 62 of the set.
For purposes of identification, just, Mr. Euro, these are architectural plans, but does this show what is on your sheets? So, it's the larger size, they could look at it?
Yes. I'm not sure which architectural sheet you're looking at, but these have not been marked. And this is Sheet A 106.
Without identifying, we can just turn to Page 61. Take 61, show the board. I thought I was going to make it shorter, but it won't.
In the lower right-hand, lower right-hand corner of Sheet 61, and this is a large set to pick up. And I'm not sure if...
It's really nice. Looks like the South of the city. In the lower, lower right-hand corner, lower right-hand corner are the sign treatments that are going to be placed.
As shown in Sheet 61 or 62 of my plan set, are the sign structures that will be placed at the two entrance ways to the development.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Have all the streets been named? Have, have all the streets been named already?
No, they are just Road A, B, and C at this time. We, we will, Mr. Schneider, as part of going into final and then going through the Township Engineering Department, we have to.
Right, I know it's a very complicated system, it's gotta be approved by so many different agencies, but my thought was, is there any way we can name some of our main streets memorializing some of our veterans that have fallen from Howell Township by, by name in, in this recent war? We have a number of young men that, is there any way to have some kind of memorial drive?
The, the answer to the question is, the, a client can do anything this board ultimately requires with your township consent because it's a street name with police consent with everything else.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I know there, there are numbers of processes, you can't have duplicate names and it's gotta be, it's gotta be approved by so many different agencies.
Well, perhaps the board.
I wouldn't want us to demand anything, but I'd like to suggest to the applicant that perhaps it would be nice to look into some way to.
Before the streets are named, we'll request of the board or the township if they have any suggested names that they'd like to be on these streets and then we can select them as to the number, you know, you'll come up with whoever you'd like, whatever, and then maybe come up with six or seven, then the applicant pick two or three of them.
That would be very nice, thank you.
Not a problem.
Mr. Chair, I just want to say I think Paul's comments are admirable, I think it's, they're definitely well-taken, however, I think the names of the streets should reflect the theme of the, of the complex and this is Boulder Ridge and Boulder Ridge should have streets that are reminiscent of that kind of location. So, I'm not taking away from Mr. Schneider's comments, I believe they're, they're definitely well-intended and I, and I wish there was a development where we could do that, but I know, I mean, it's up to the developer if they want to do that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider, I think was clear in that he's not demanding or requiring anything, the applicant has heard the, the desire and they'll, they'll proceed accordingly.
Any other comments or questions for this witness?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
At the last hearing, there was some discussion on the woodland, the woodland management plan and then I'm seeing in Birdsall Engineering's reports that, that plans were submitted to the Township Certified Tree Expert? Is that, is that CME, is that going to CME, is that going to? Because then, CME's report also reflects that.
The, the Woodlands Management Plan was initially submitted as part of the original package and at the time was reviewed by Mr. Panic, who was the tree expert at the time. It was again re-submitted as part of this latest submission package so that both Birdsall and CME can, can review it. They both have comments in their technical parts of their letters which we will comply with and coordinate with their staff to make sure that we address their comments.
Any other questions? Mr. Sonablik, he can bring on you next. Thank you, Mr. Kennel.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sonablik, was Mr. Kennel sworn at the first hearing?
Not, not in this, not in this case. So, we have to swear him in and he has to tell.
Mr. Kennel, do you swear affirm the testimony about to give this board the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Yes, Scott Kennel, K-E-N-N-E-L, with McDonough and Ray Associates, fourteen thirty-one, Lakewood Road, Manasquan.
Have you ever appeared before this board before, Mr.?
Yes, I have.
Thank you. If you would, and perhaps in, in some detail, but not, not overly, overly broad, would you go through the process in terms of the, this development and especially relating to the comments that were in the CME report of May thirtieth, two thousand and eight, relating to traffic, relating to the light at Colts Neck Road, relating to our light, relating to the turnaround, the parking and the like?
Yes, I think it'd be efficient if we just go through the CME letter and address the items as are enumerated. First item refers to, is five, five B relative to parking spaces along interior drives. As I review the plan, I don't see where this is, this is applicable to the, to this site. There are certain areas that I consider the main access where we don't have parking and that would exist with the access off of Road B where, in this area that I'm pointing to, just north of thirty-three, and this is exhibit A twenty-five. And then if, again, referring to the commercial tract and the western access, where we have that designed as a right-in, right-out, there is no parking along the access throat. Once you enter the site from either one of those two driveways, the site is laid out to provide a good distribution of traffic so they're not forced or focused on one particular area of the site. For example, if you come off Road B, you have an opportunity to proceed along the east side of the building or along the rear of the building where the parking space is provided, just as if you enter directly off of thirty-three, you have again an option, an opportunity to either continue northerly into the site or make a right turn and go along the front of the buildings and it provides a good distribution. As I understand the ordinance, I don't think it's, applies to the layout that we have provided here and that this site could operate safely with the parking on the circulation aisles that we have in the commercial tract.
You have no problem with it, in other words, what we're proposing, Mr. Kennel?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Peters.
I like the second part of the testimony where we had no problem with it. If we go back to the premise that the main aisle that is required to be thirty feet is only the throat coming in off of thirty-three and coming in off of Road B and that the aisle that circulates around the perimeter of the buildings is not the main circulation aisle, we're gonna get into semantics. The aisle, we don't have a good definition in the ordinance for main circulation aisle and a circulation aisle, it's not the main circulation aisle. But in this particular case, the aisle that goes around the buildings that accesses parking spaces is twenty-five feet wide. When you read our ordinance, it says all main access aisles shall be thirty feet wide. The testimony we heard was that it's thirty feet from thirty-three to where the circulation aisles start and from Road B to where the circulation aisles.
My, my testimony was that it was twenty, it's twenty-five feet, I didn't say that it was thirty. What I, what I refer to is there's no parking along those access drive throats until you get to the first decision point to proceed through the site.
Thank you.
And I guess that'll follow to the next item, five C, relative to the thirty-foot wide drive aisles. It's my opinion that the design provided with twenty-five-foot circulation aisles are adequate to accommodate passenger vehicles, service vehicles, and emergency apparatus to adequately serve the site. There was a, a truck turning path planned, provided to the board that demonstrated how a truck can circulate not only through the residential but through the commercial tract and that would be a large wheelbase vehicle. That was actually a fire emergency apparatus with a, if I recall, forty-seven-foot wheelbase.
So in other words, in your opinion, there would be no restriction for emergency vehicles or commercial vehicles with a twenty-five-foot wide aisle?
That's correct. The next item refers to the parking supply proposed and based on our calculations, the two hundred and fifty-seven spaces proposed to serve the retail and office use is adequate. The ordinance requires three hundred and twenty-three parking spaces and that's generated by the parking ordinance for retail use where again, six point seven spaces per one thousand feet are required. Industry standards and my experiences are that a supply of four point oh spaces per thousand would be adequate to support this site. There also has to be consideration the fact of shared parking between the various, between retail and office uses, the fact that they peak at different times during the day or on different days of the week. I, I think you'll also experience because of this, that we have the residential community, there'll be people, be pedestrians or bicyclists, again, which will help reduce the parking demand and it's my opinion that the two hundred and fifty-seven parking spaces for the commercial tract is adequate to serve this with no detriment to the site or to the community.
Mr. Sonablik, and we're still restricting the office to no medical, correct?
Yes.
I will now move on further into the CME letter to item eight, G, and it makes reference to the intersection of Colts Neck Road and Route thirty-three and a fair share contribution. That intersection will be a subject of a detailed analysis as part of the NJDOT access application, will be required to do a comprehensive traffic impact study that would include not only the access drives but the intersection of Colts Neck Road and Route thirty-three. And should there be additional mitigation, they will be responsible for pro-rata share and I'll discuss further future improvements as part of another development at an intersection. Well, I guess we jump into that. Eight, H refers to the installation of the traffic signal at Route thirty-three and Colts Neck Road. For the board's benefit, I represent the Equestria Development, so I'm very familiar with the requirement of a signal at that location as part of phase two, which I understand that there's been some conceptual plans presented to, I guess, the board professionals which would include a retail and some multifamily dwellings, age restricted dwellings. I have an exhibit and I don't know which number we're up to now.
Eight, eight twenty-seven?
What this, what this exhibit intends to represent is a conceptual improvement plan for the intersection of Colts Neck Road and Route thirty-three. Over the last year, we've had numerous discussions with the township engineer, Monmouth County traffic and roadway engineers as well as NJDOT in order to install a traffic light at this location as well as process future traffic volumes. As everybody's aware of, this, this intersection's questionable, there's a high accident rate in this location with the blinker light, blinking light and that there's a need for a full-time traffic signal to better manage the traffic in this location. And what's proposed and what's been approved conceptually on the township, county, and state level is to restripe Route thirty-three to provide dedicated left-turn lanes and for orientations, from left to right is Route thirty-three, Colts Neck Road, Farmers Brown's driving range is in the upper right, the, the gas station at this location and it would consider restriping thirty-three to provide left-turn lanes. That'll provide a better organization of the traffic going through that location. In addition, it's proposed to widen the northbound approach, so you have two lanes to have a dedicated right-turn lane and then a lane that would accommodate through movements and left turns. This improvement has been, again, it's been evolving over the last year, it was not included in the original traffic analysis prepared by Kandarian Zalinski back in October because there was questions raised about the poor levels of service in their analysis. What I can represent is with this improvement and with consideration for the balance of Equestria, the other developments along thirty-three, as well as traffic to be generated by Boulder, Boulder Ridge, that it will have an overall level of service D during the peak hour periods, be in the morning and afternoon. So this will address capacity as well as safety issues with those improvements. As far as the timing of those improvements, as I indicated, we've been spending the last year in discussions with the township, county, and state, and let me just back, give you a little background, the reason the township and the county are involved is Colts Neck Road south of thirty-three is under county jurisdiction, north of thirty-three it's a municipal roadway, so therefore we need to involve everybody to have a consensus on the improvements. Many of the meetings were held last year and we've kind of been in a holding pattern until recently because we've been, it's, these improvements will be tied into the phase two developments at Equestria and those, the, the scope of land development there has, has, is now come into focus. Originally they were considering thirty thousand square feet of retail, now it's down to somewhere around seventeen thousand and it's, so the development plan's come into focus and allows us then to now prepare a formal application to the NJDOT for the intersection as well as for the Equestria Phase Two. And we expect that we could file that within the next two to three months and for DOT approval, I'll be honest with you, it can be anywhere from twelve to eighteen months once you make your first submission. Anything that involves a traffic signal is a very lengthy process because of shortage of manpower at the state. Equestria right now is responsible for the design and securing the approvals as part of the settlement agreement that was part of that project back in two thousand and six. That settlement agreement also says that Centex, Equestria are responsible for a fair share, so there's other parties that'll be participating. Boulder Ridge may be one of those parties, that's won't be known until we get further into DOT with the Boulder Ridge application. So, again, at this stage, I would say for those improvements, at the earliest, I'm gonna, probably two years. I hope that addresses the question you raised as far as the timing and timeline.
The issue as it relates to timing is whether or not this board should condition any approval upon a timeline for the installation of the traffic light. In other words, there's always a sort of jumping off point, there's a point in time where the dike breaks or the pail becomes full and overflows. At what point in time do we tie COs for this unit or building permits for this project to the installation of the traffic light?
That I can't answer. Again, the analysis I performed here was based on full buildout of Equestria which has probably got three hundred-plus units to go. This development, so there hasn't been that iteration, I will say though that it's my experience that this will be dictated by NJDOT as we proceed with both applications. That's all I can offer, I can't, other than that, that's all I can offer.
We're, we're going to have to make an application to the DOT for a light in front of our premises, are we not?
That'll be part and parcel to the anal, traffic analysis for this intersection, correct?
So if, if we were to get a preliminary approval, we'll be making an application for, to the DOT, they will incorporate it all, but how long is it gonna take even for us to get through with our light situation?
The same time period, I would say, to earliest be probably two years before that is improvement is in place.
If, assuming that we, we got approved for our light, but Colts Neck Crossing had not yet been approved, would you, as a traffic engineer, think that this would create a significant problem for that Colts Neck Crossing over and above that which exists today?
Well, again, with the, the traffic generated by Boulder Ridge is, is a small percentage of the overall volume at that location, there's in excess of two thousand vehicles an hour during the morning and afternoon peak hours, the traffic we're generating will be a very small percentage.
But again, I'm, I'm sorry, there's a point where the traffic light is required and I think the residents of the town and our building department and engineering department are entitled to know at what point are the applicants gonna help us figure out if they need the traffic light before the first CO, the fiftieth CO, the hundredth CO, or they don't need the traffic light at all? Or we're gonna ask DOT about it, or we're gonna have someone through the municipality figure it out, but just saying that.
We'll know more.
We don't know or, or not getting sort of a, respectfully, a straight answer, I'm not sure how Ron writes up preliminary, so they can come back for final and say, well, we've met all conditions of the preliminary because we didn't talk about phasing the traffic light to COs.
Well, I would, I would suggest, I just spoke with Mr. Kennel, that we're, we're gonna be processing this and we have to, we can't even build or get final approval or do anything until we have our traffic light approved in front of our site, that's, that's fact number one. So it would seem to me that by the time we come back for final, all of this will be resolved, we would leave open to you a determination as to under what, and you'll have a better information, as will the state, as will everybody in terms of how fast anything happens on Colts Neck Crossing with Equestria and the township and we're going to do our fair share. So at final, it would be determined before we could get a building permit or a CO, you would make that. would make that decision, and we could leave that. We really almost have to leave that until we come in for final.
So, Mr. Sonnenblick, at the time of final, you'll have the DOT permit, and at that time, you'll be able to tell us what the...
I don't think we'll have the approval, but we'll have a better understanding as we're in the process, in the works. And again, the other thing you have to recall that with regard to Colts Neck Road and Route 33, as far as Centex, it refers to their fair share for installation. I mean, it's inferred that there's other parties and potentially even the township involved. There's also, at that location, a require, an acquisition, a small land acquisition in the corner, in the southwest corner. That's a process that has to evolve. So it makes it difficult as far as pinning down timeframes because there's a lot of moving pieces associated with that. But what a better handle is we process the application and move forward.
Yes, Mr. Peters.
Would it be fair, and I'm just going to throw this out there, that at the time of application for final, it will be determined the need for tying Route 33 traffic light improvements at either location into building permits or COs? At least now, we reconcile that there may need to be that issue, and we don't forget about it, misrepresent it, lose it. If we talk about it now, we have to talk about it at final.
You have no problem with that?
I'm not looking to tie him down now. I'm sorry, Mr. Saye.
One minute.
I wasn't looking to tie him down, per se, now because, again, background growth rates, I mean, the original Colts Neck Crossing study's got to be six years old. It expected full buildout last year. So, and the project's still got 300 homes left. All we need to do is make sure that we're covered so that a future board or a future builder both understand what they have to do when they get back here for final, when they talk about the two traffic lights that we've spoken about this evening. I don't want to, we understand that this applicant will bear probably most, if not all, the responsibility for the traffic light at his entrance. There may be a proportionate share. I don't know. I'm not sure if it's this board's job to figure out what his proportionate share is in terms of dollars. I think there's a traffic light, there's a group of people we talked about, the DOT, the county, the town, they all get together, figure out what should end up in a planning board resolution so we can tell our township engineer or our building department. This is who's going to pay for it, this is how it's going to get done, this is when the permits need to be issued.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Saye.
Ernie, question for you. You're talking about west of the development here. How about east of the development, where you got 34 and 33, where the state has been looking to upgrade that for quite a while now?
I'm not sure we've, I'm not sure we're all the way through to traffic testimony, so I'm going to leave that to Mr. Kennel to, but I think we've issued, we've talked about the access to the site, and I think we've talked about west so far. So I think that's a valid question.
Very good.
I'll follow up on that again. I did a little homework. First of all, as part of submitting to NJDOT, based on their criteria for establishing study locations, that would not be a location we'd have to analyze, but I was aware of the fact that the state had contracted a consultant, I'm going to say four or five years ago. At that time, they were Volmer, now they're known as StanTech. And I think it got to a point of frustration. I spoke with the project manager on that probably two weeks ago, he, who's a retired NJDOT employee from their traffic department. And basically, that, they did some preliminary studies, but the project was basically extinguished and go any further, and they basically concentrated on the recent rotary improvements done at 33 and 34. So I anticipated that question. I did my, you know, research to see if there's anything on the radar screen, and based on the information I was able to find, that has not, at this point, it's, DOT is not pursuing anything at that location. I just, I just want to mention as far as one other comment from, Mr. Peters has stated, relative to the traffic signal at the site access, based on the state regulations, that will be 100% responsibility of the applicant. There would not be any pro-rata share, but the pro-rata share will exist at Colts Neck Road.
Mr. Chair. Ernie, so basically, what we can hold them accountable to is for the signal at their entry.
That's what Mr. Kennel just indicated. DOT told them.
So, yeah, we have to hold them accountable. As far as their fair share for the one to the rest, I mean, I don't know how we could tie that into a...
The only thing we do is say that they're going to be responsible for a pro-rata contribution to whatever the improvements are. We don't determine the scope of those improvements or what the dollar amounts are.
My concern is that if the analysis at final says that before 50 COs are issued, that traffic light needs to go from blinking to regular in the left turn lanes and the additional northbound lane on Colts Neck Road, then we have to tie the number of building permits or COs into the completion of those improvements.
Well, who's responsible for that determination? Is the DOT responsible or is the applicant responsible?
The determinations as to what?
As to when, how many COs need to be issued.
No, no, the DOT nor the applicant are going to be responsible for that. What Ernie is saying is, that's a condition that we would place at a certain volume, that it's going to be necessary to have the light. The DOT or whatever the agency is that's going to have the ultimate jurisdiction over the improvements and the costs, that's just what it is. They're going to say you have to put this...
Right, but I mean, again, how do we determine? What is, what is the algorithm or the...
Well, what the applicant's telling you is, they will have had their, you know, I guess, a pre-application meeting with the DOT.
We've had that already a number of months ago, so we're going to be filing in the near future.
They'll have a much better understanding for what the requirements are going to be because they'll be farther into the process at the time of final, as well as the other applicants for those other properties being farther along in the process as well. So they'll have the information that we would need to make that...
I mean, I'm very concerned about Ernie's...
Kurt, 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 we have an answer for you here, but just...
If I can answer, what makes this a little more complex is the fact that there's an ongoing program for that intersection. If Centex was not in the picture and Boulder's was a standalone, typically what NJDOT requires is to analyze those study locations. There are a number of locations that may be determined where's mitigation for a particular development, and you have a certain fair share. And then they decide which of those, you know, basically, you pull the money together to get one improvement. That's on a standard application. What's a little unique here is, and that's what, I guess, we have to think a little further through, is the fact that there's a private developer application, and then there's a kind of a quasi with Centex because it involves the town and the county. So that's what makes it a little more complex, and we're going to have to think that through a little bit further as we move to final.
It has in the state in many instances, and I'm not saying they're going to do it in this case, but predicated approvals based upon an improvement being in?
An improvement being in and just paying your fair share towards that.
But what we're saying for the purposes of our resolution and the condition in preliminary is we're not forgetting this issue.
That's correct.
We're preserving this issue for the time of final where you're going to give us, you know, more complete information at that time for us to make our decision.
And we understand that.
I don't want to belabor the meeting. I want the board members to understand why we brought this up. If you're down in Ramtown at Radiance, where all the ballfields are across from the church, there's a four-way stop sign there, okay? There was supposed to be a traffic light there 15 years ago. The developer at the northeast, the northwest quadrant and the southwest quadrant both wrote checks to the town. We're still waiting 15 years later for the traffic light there because DOT won't pay for it, the town and the county can't agree who's supposed to take the lead, but two developers paid money into it, and there's still not a traffic light there 15 years later.
Where'd that money go?
I knew you were going to ask me that question. So my concern is that there was no trigger to turn the traffic light on. So the developer said, fine, I'll give you my money, I'm done. What we have here is that Colts Neck Crossing already appears to be part of the trigger mechanism. These guys may just have to write a check. I don't know, but we'd like to know just in case this job gets started before Colts Neck is the trigger. So that we don't end up with three-quarters of Colts Neck built and three-quarters of this project built and a blinking light still out there.
But my question to you is, who makes that determination?
If DOT doesn't make it, the planning board's going to ask a consultant to make it.
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman.
If we already have Colts Neck Crossing approved, shouldn't we know when that light's going to be done?
That's between Colts Neck Crossing and the state. I understand the town's involved. We're only involved because the north side of Colts Neck Road is a municipal road. So to that end, certainly, we can be heard at DOT conferences if we'd like to be. My understanding is it's being done in-house through the engineering department. I will endeavor to find out before we get back to final or before we read the resolution for preliminary, if we get to that point, what's going on and try to have at least an update for the board members.
Colts Neck is also not completely approved. There's still the portion of it that has the 70 age-restricted affordable housing units.
And that's where this traffic signal is tied to that. The signal was not tied to the portions that are approved with the detached housing, which is 480 homes. There was, there was no improvements to Colts Neck and 33 tied to that, I'll say, Phase One approval. But the traffic signal is tied to the Phase Two, which is now a process we're initiating with design documents.
I can tell the board members that Equestria, the portion we're talking about, had a professionals' meeting this past Tuesday. So they're moving along. They're not scheduled yet, so I don't suspect we'll see them much before September. But they'll be here, Mr. Kennel's heard the comments about this project. I'm sure he'll come loaded for bear when he brings that project back.
I just have two more minutes to finish up on the comments in the CME letter. Referring to item eight I, I presented to the conceptual improvement plan that addresses the comment to provide adequate levels of service. HA deals with the parking supply, I spoke about that earlier. And then AK, there was a comment that the traffic counts in the Kandarian Traffic Report dated October 1, 2007, had traffic counts conducted in September when there were, it was a Jewish holiday, and there was a question of the validity of those traffic counts. Our firm has traffic counts from May of 2007. The morning volumes that were presented in that report were probably about 5% lower as far as the afternoon peak hour, the volumes were within 1%. And the critical hour of analysis, really, is the peak hour, that's the highest intersection volume analysis. And again, as I indicated, I've done a level of service analysis with that concept sketch, so I can present that to CME. It'll be part of the NJDOT application, which the township will be copied, as well as Monmouth County. So we'll provide that additional information as we move forward. And I think that addresses all the traffic-related issues in the CME report.
I have no further questions. Does anyone have any questions for this witness? Seeing none, do you have any other witnesses to present, Mr. Sonnenblick? If the board would like, I could bring up the architect. I would ask, I don't know that you need the architect, he's already shown the, you've seen the elevations, nothing's going to change in really, it's just the signage, and he has, I can represent to you that the vice plants will show that the side view is similar to the front view, and that's basically it. I don't want to waste time for...
Mr. Sonnenblick, the signs comply with our ordinance requirements.
Yes, they do. That should be sufficient. So at this point, I guess the public can speak, and I could sum up. At this point, I'd like to open up this hearing to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and move back to the board members. Do we have any comments from any board members? Professionals?
They have addressed all my concerns, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
I'd like to move that, Mr. Chairman, with all the stipulations that were stated by Mr. Peters as regards to the traffic, the traffic light. Second.
I have Mr. Schneider and Mr. Tantillo.
I was looking forward to Mr. Sonnenblick.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Saye.
Did he answer?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislaki?
Yes.
Mr. Macastro?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Morello?
Yes.
Chairman Estes?
Yes.
Application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Before we move on to the next application, I believe it'll probably be pretty difficult for us to get to our last application on the agenda, so I'd like to have the attorney for Forest River Farms. I'd like to not have the attorney for Forest River Farms.
Let the record, so no, and actually, when you did this, we knew that, because Boulder's been on and on, so you steal out of me, but you quit at 11, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Morello said 10:30, but I'm not, in other words, I don't know how long Verizon is ahead of us. Maybe it'll be quick, perhaps we could get something done or not?
I think the chance of, I think the chance of you is pretty, getting on tonight is slim to none, Mr. Sonnenblick.
Okay, well, then, on that basis, we would ask you to take jurisdiction, Mr. Garofalo? My clients, I just want him to be here when he speaks to when, we could go on again. So if jurisdiction is accepted, and then without further notice, but I am aware that you're not going to have a meeting on July 3rd.
That's right.
The question is, it may be that Peter Locata may come instead of me on the 17th, if that's available for us.
Oh, we want you to come, Jerry.
I understand that.
No, it's some of the laws, just as well.
Probably better.
We have a rather full agenda on June 19th. We have Four Partners, Sierra Builders, Fairfield at Howe. July 17th, we have Christ Church, we have 3G Corp, Cypress Properties, although it may be that they are going to adjourn some of their...
We can't do July 17th. In any event, our engineer has indicated he won't be present, so we would look for, we would look for August 20th.
How about August 21st?
August 21st, then.
We only have one application on for August 21st, so that looks, that looks good.
Okay.
And then you'll see me, you lucky guys.
All right.
We can't have it on that day, it's his birthday.
Barbara will bake you a cake.
His birthday, is it Curtis? Is your birthday? August 21st, all right, I wrote it down.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'm just going to carry that notice.
Do we need an extension of time, Jerry?
If you do, you can get a continuing one.
We do need it.
I'll give it to you, you got it. I'll give you the continuing one, Barbara, as always, so that you don't have to worry about it in the future.
indefinite?
Indefinite.
The application of Forest River Farms, case number SD 2934, for preliminary major subdivision in Woodlands Management Plan Approval, will be carried to August 21st, 2008, 7:30 here at the Municipal Building on Preventorian Road. No further notice will be given to property owners.
Next case, preliminary and major subdivision in Woodland, I'm sorry, preliminary and final site plan for case number SP 920, application of Verizon Wireless as applicant and Howell Township as owner seeking preliminary and final site plan to co-locate 12 antennas at the centerline mounting height of 128 feet on a proposed monopole. In addition, the applicant proposes to construct an 11 and 1/2 feet by 30-foot equipment shelter which will be enclosed by an 8-foot chain link fence in the R3 and HD1 zones on premises known as Block 5401, Lot 1001, Aldridge Road. Exploration date is July 11, '08.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Richard Stanzion, Harry Gubnack, Stanzion at Dunn, Tom's River, New Jersey, representing the applicant. Also in this application, there is a motion, is an application to amend the previously granted site plan to OmniPoint Communications, which this board approved. Mr. Gneri will explain that, but I was requested by the township and by your attorney to amend my application to include the amendment of T-Mobile's site plan, as they are the actual party that's going to be constructing this monopole and the compound.
Okay.
Actually, as you indicated, this is for the Aldridge Road parking lot. You've already approved this application by T-Mobile back in August 3rd of 2006. It was approved for 150-foot monopole with an extendable to 165 feet. The resolution was adopted in September of 2006. Additionally, at some later date, you approved a resolution for Sprint Spectrum. Additionally, at some later date, you approved a resolution for Sprint Spectrum to locate at the Forcehead facility. Verizon Wireless has now come in, and Mr. Igneri will explain. When we were doing our site plan, it was determined T-Mobile could not build the monopole in a location that they'd originally approved slightly because of an easement. But Mr. Igneri, my site engineer and planner, if we could be sworn, I'd like to have him...
Just before we do that, Mr. Stanzione, Mr. Chair, we never granted an approval for Sprint. They withdrew prior to coming to the board.
I have a copy of a resolution.
That was for submission waivers for the application.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't for an approval.
Sorry, brother.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, only about the truth?
Yes, I do.
For its professionals, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, only about the truth? Can you just state and spell your name for the record?
Ron, last name, Igneri, I.G.N.E.R.I. I am with the Firm of Innovative Engineering, 1144 Hooper Avenue in Tom's River, New Jersey. We are the engineers of record for this site for Verizon Wireless.
Before, counsel, before you begin your testimony, I don't want you to be surprised. It's our intention to wrap up this meeting this evening, no later than 11 o'clock.
That's fine. I mean, we were requested to come, we were supposed to be here two weeks from now. We were requested to come tonight.
Well, you requested to be seen early.
It was a request that was made of the board, not by us. It was not by us. Okay. I'm just making it very clear that it was...
I think what you want to do is get your application started, is what I'm hearing, right?
I think I can. I think I can be finished very quickly.
Okay.
Mr. Igneri, for the benefit of the board, would you give them your educational qualifications, your professional qualifications, and any licenses you might hold?
I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering and a master's science degree in civil engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. I've been employed in the field of civil engineering and telecommunications since 1976. My licenses as an engineer and a planner have been active continuously since 1982. I've been before the township of Howell zoning board a number of times. This is my first appearance before the planning board, other than the completeness hearing before, and I've been before hundreds of boards in the state of New Jersey.
We'll accept your qualification.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Igneri, if we approve this application, will my phone ring in Jackson Township? My Verizon cellphone?
That's a question directed better to the radio frequency engineer, and I am the site engineer.
Okay.
It's an honest answer.
Mr. Igneri, for the benefit of the board, as you heard in my preliminary introduction, how did it come about that the plan is here before the board is with them this evening?
Okay. T-Mobile had an approved site located in the parking lot of Aldridge Road and Route 9. Verizon was interested in co-locating on that tower, which is generally the practice, good planning practice, good ordinances to co-locate as opposed to construct your own pole. When myself and other representatives for Verizon Wireless visited the site and looked at the plans that had been prepared previously and submitted and approved by T-Mobile, there were some restrictions on locating the other carriers' equipment due to the presence of an underground storm drain. And with that, I sought a meeting in the field with your wireless representative, Declan O'Scanlon, and representatives from T-Mobile, both their in-house engineering and their external construction folks. And we met on-site, and we looked around and said, "How can we make this work?" And with that, I said, "Well, I know where we need to go." And I said, "Why don't we just work together, and I'll work with your site base?" And essentially, I reconfigured the compound, and I shared those results and the actual layout with T-Mobile, and we received their concurrence. We shared that with the town, and we received the town's concurrence, that is, Declan O'Scanlon. He recognized that this is a good solution where the site could accommodate T-Mobile. There was room for Sprint, who was active at the time, and Verizon Wireless could also co-locate. As it is right now, I know for a fact that T-Mobile has construction plans, and they're basically on hold, waiting for us here this evening to get approval, to, in a sense, memorialize the revised plan so that they can proceed. So right now, they're on hold because of the fact that they recognize that it needed to be reconfigured. Their plans actually match ours. We share the same site base, so we're all in sync.
Can you describe to the board the differences between the plan that they approved for T-Mobile back in 2006 and the ones that's being, the one that is being presented here this evening?
Certainly. I have mounted two of the drawings that are in the set of drawings. I don't know whether you need to mark them as exhibits. They are exactly the same as the drawings that you have. I just put them on a board.
It's the same size and everything?
Same size, same numbers.
Barbara has already premarked it.
Do you guys have copied exhibits? I think I emailed them.
Yeah, no, you gave me the exhibit list.
And what I'll do is I'll refer to them with the drawing number that's in the lower right-hand corner. I mounted only two sheets. I think that's all we're going to need. Z01 in the lower right-hand corner, and the other sheet is Z02.
And just for the record, those are the plans that Barbara's premarked as A1.
And the latest revision date we have is in the lower left-hand corner, just so we can put on record that it was revision 1 dated 11/12/07. Those are the plans that you should have. This is the Aldridge Road park and ride. Aldridge Road is to the north. Route 9 is off the page to the left. North is generally up the page. The lot is in the HD zone for the most part. And I say that because the zone map does kind of traverse the front part of the lot in its zone residential, which is for the other side towards the east. And I quite frankly, the zone boundary, from a planning perspective, probably needs to be modified, because this is a park and ride, and it is what it is. Needless to say, towards the southern portion along the western property line, the property has a little notch taken out of it, and there is an existing detention basin, which serves the parking area and this parking area, as well as the parking area and the asphalt surfaces and the impervious coverage of the shopping center towards Route 9. So with that, when T-Mobile was here, this site was selected as a good location and where variances would not affect anybody, because essentially, your next-door neighbor is the back of a shopping center and a detention basin. So we did not move the site from that location. We slightly made adjustments to the compound. I won't get into all the bulks at this point in time. I'd rather just get right into the details. If you go to the next page, which is Z02, there are two details on this page. On the left-hand side of the page is a blow-up of the detail of that area right towards the southwest corner, and on the right-hand side is the elevation view. If we go first to the details on the left, Z02, the pole shifted slightly south and a little bit, and I say a little bit because the dimensions on the T-Mobile drawings said plus or minus 20 feet from the westerly property line. And our plans depict the tower set back to the side of the tower at 13 feet 1 inch. For the record, and so that we have a clear number, the centerline of the pole from the westerly property line is 13.8 feet. That's where it's located in our site base on the plans, and that is the same. I have a copy of the T-Mobile drawings as well. We are in sync.
But just to be clarified, the original 2006 plan of T-Mobile had a plus or minus 20 feet to the centerline of the pole?
Yes.
Okay. So in, if the board were to look at it, at the worst-case scenario, it has been shifted approximately 6 and 1/2 feet to the west?
Correct.
Okay.
The T-Mobile cabinets are essentially in the same location. Originally, the compound, just to describe the differences very briefly, the compound was originally along the top here. We have it notched out along the existing curb. And you can see on our plan, there's a dashed line, and you'll see a catch basin. That ran literally through the compound, and to locate equipment on top of a storm drain was not a good way to try to construct the compound. So what we did was we used that as our, essentially, our northern boundary for the compound, and we shifted things south a little bit. The T-Mobile cabinets are located in the grass island right before you get into the, you know, right up, right past the curb, so that didn't really move. And for the sake of getting everything in the compound, we left the telecommunications cabinet, which is called a Mesa cabinet. That's where all the back hall electronic telecommunications are located. We didn't move that either, and that's still on the grass island. We used the existing, there's a, there's a grass island that protrudes, and there's like a couple of, I think, two or three parking spaces just below that. We use that and the curb line that exists there as the northerly boundary for the proposed compound. And Sprint's equipment, which is indicated here on our plan as future equipment area by others, that is the Sprint equipment shelter that we were aware of at the time of developing this plan. That's not part of this approval per se, but we're showing it as a location for a future carrier, should Sprint come back into the picture, or any other carrier for that matter.
Okay. And where you can see that any other carrier coming back for this matter would have to come before this board to get approval for the location of that facility, as well as any antennas on this pole.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Peters.
One of the reasons we're having a full site plan here this evening is because the pole had to move. If not, this would be, as Mr. Stanzione would like to tell us, just the third carrier on a pole. Unfortunately, due to the field conditions and the idea that when the municipality and T-Mobile put together the first carrier, the pole itself, the future master plan for three sets of equipment cabinet weren't detailed. So T-Mobile could build this, put it where they want, go away. When Sprint came in, we need to move the pole five feet. They're not in the picture anymore. These guys bear the burden of making sure that this pole is located in the right spot and can take care of all three carriers. So kudos to the applicant for making this thing go, because I have to tell you, this pole should have been up 18 months ago, but for the relocation of the pole, five feet. There's a valid concern. They said they'd only be 20 feet off the property line, and they're closer. Our municipal officials, either in building or in engineering, picked it up and said, "It says 20 feet. If you're going to be this close, so you can do everything, you need to come back here." Well, Sprint was supposed to come back here. They're out of the picture. Mr. Stanzione, am I wrong in any way?
No, no.
These guys are cleaning up what didn't happen the first time and what never came back to us the second time, so the third guys are here getting it right. Kudos to them for getting it right and getting it so that when the second guy comes back, we won't have to have a full site plan application. They'll just be the second co-locator on a pole that's approved sufficient so that we can put all the equipment on the ground.
Mr. Chair, if I may...
I'm sorry?
My concerns with the first application, and I'm going to raise them again with this, is the fall zone of the actual antenna. I mean, chances of it coming down, but if it does, how, now that it's been moved, is it closer to the shopping center? Is there a possibility? I know there's also been a residential approval on the easterly side of the property towards... I'm just wondering if this movement of the pole puts any of those two pieces in jeopardy?
Let's take them one at a time. Let's talk first to the fall zone. This monopole is designed in accordance with the TIAEIA industry standards for telecommunications towers. That is to say that they have a designated wind load. They apply a gust factor to that. In Monmouth County, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of, I think, 145 miles per hour without looking it up. They then take the tower, assume that it's coated with a half-inch of radial ice, and that's how it's designed. A tower and a tower specifically designed for co-location, as this one is, with some caveats as well. This is built initially as a 150-foot pole, and it is also going to be constructed so that it can accommodate an additional 15 feet should at some point in the future this, another carrier need to locate here, and there's no room below that, they need to go up. Knowing that information upfront is key to doing the proper design, because the foundation needs to be the strongest element, and then the actual flange and the anchors and the pole itself. The way a pole is designed, it's designed to be increasingly weaker, if you will, as it gets taller. Poles don't just fall over. A failure in monopole design is considered when a pole deflects due to heavy winds and perhaps it doesn't return back to its upright position. Worst-case scenario, catastrophic, it could kink.
Okay.
But they don't fall flat. So the whole concept of fall zone, I'd like to just clear that up. They don't fall...
Mr. Vislaki, if you actually wanted the numbers, I own a scale and a set of plans, and it looks like it's about 250 feet from the monopole to the Aldridge Plaza Shopping Center, the back of the building, and it looks like it's about 270 feet from the monopole to the property line to the east where we approved that 17-lot subdivision.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. The question number two, I guess, was to the residences, and I guess that answers that. Actually, the way we moved it a few feet, which is kind of nominal, was towards the west, away from the residences, towards the, that are located on the east. Specifically, the tower, let me just finish up what's going on with the compound. The approval was for an eight-foot-high chain link fence. I think one of the stipulations of the resolution was to use perma-hedge inserts to screen the equipment, and we will continue to do that. Our application took the T-Mobile configuration with the Sprint area that was already designated, and we extended it into the grass area just beyond the curb along the south end of the parking lot. Parking lot itself extends fairly deep going in the south direction, and then there's a little bit of a wooded area beyond that. The ground there is relatively flat. There's a gentle slope that goes up. There are some white pines that would need to be removed, and that's under T-Mobile's area, so they need to clear that with, for replacing their equipment. I've already met with T&M, and we also had a Woodlands Management Plan put together...
I think it means CME.
CME, I'm sorry. Jinx, wrong town. And we had a Woodlands Management Plan. A representative went out there to view the site and said there was no impact on the trees, so we're good to go as far as any change in the grade and the trees.
As a result of the redesign, you may have been going, there is now a side yard setback variance that's different than the one that was granted for T-Mobile. Is that correct?
That is correct, and that is on our bulk table if you go to Z01.
And what is the side yard variance that is now being requested, and for what facility?
The side yard setback, as depicted on Z01 in the bulk table, you'll see there are, there's a 25-foot requirement for side yard setback, and the antennas on the tower would be 8.1 feet, and the Verizon Wireless shelter would be 7.2 feet. Those are the two side yard, well, it's actually one side yard setback variance, but I'm describing it using two elements, both the antennas on the tower and the shelter on the ground.
And even the original monopole approved for T-Mobile was within the 25-feet side yard setback, and this is just...
That is correct. So we're not exacerbating the previously approved side yard variance. We're just clarifying it with our specific information.
Okay.
Moving to the wireless requirements under Section 188-98E2B under existing towers, and we're calling this an existing tower because there was a previous approval for it. There are two variances with that aspect of the application. One is for the maximum equipment area. Your ordinance calls for a maximum of 200 square feet. The Verizon Wireless shelter is 11.6 by 30. That's their standard shelter. It's been used at a number of locations. I've already gotten approval in Howell at, let's say, Kelly Chevrolet. There was a New Jersey Transit location, JC P&amp;L Tower on Oak Glen Road, but they were all the same exact shelter as this. And the reason for that is Verizon Wireless provides both cellular and PCS service. That is to say, there's two, there's two different bands that they have for wireless communications. T-Mobile, for instance, is the higher frequency or PCS-only. Sprint is PCS. Then they merge with Nextel, so they have both as well. But in addition to that, the shelter has two compartments. There's the equipment cabinet area, and then there's a generator, backup generator. So in essence, the equipment area portion of the shelter is within the intent of the ordinance. It's approximately 200 square feet. So we have 345 feet, 345 square feet total equipment area if you combine both, and 200 is the requirement, so that is a variance.
And the height of the shelter?
If we give you this variance, my phone will ring in Jackson?
I'll do my best.
Absolutely. We're going to get that phone... Absolutely. We're going to get that phone to ring. Just got to tell me what part of Jackson.
I gotta find him, Ben. The other variance has to do with the height. These are pre-manufactured shelters. The height of the shelter is literally 10 feet nine on one side and 10 feet six on the other, and it sticks out of the ground about another six inches because of the foundation. So, the true number is 11.3 feet. Your ordinance says 10 feet maximum, so we have a minor variance in height. So, we're calling that a height variance.
I want to drop back to one thing you talked, you talked about a generator, and just explain to the board that, how the generator's constructed, how it's contained within the shelter, and when it's used and exercised.
Okay. There, there are two compartments in the shelter. The larger one, towards the left of the page, is where all the radio cabinets are. The radio cabinets are where the signal, uh, is transmitted back into the telephone lines, and, uh, the coaxial cables go in a cable bridge up into the pole to the antennas. That's the part that operates the cell tower, if you will. The smaller compartment contains a diesel generator. It's inside the building. The building is of masonry and steel construction. It has an aggregate finish, and it's substantial in terms of its, uh, construction. In fact, it's, uh, already an approved structure. It's been inspected at a state level, and it has an IBC number. So, it's already been approved. Your local building code official does not even have to go inside to inspect anything. The generator is inside that smaller compartment, and it's mounted on a steel frame. The fuel tank for that generator is integral to the framing. This, the, the tank itself is double-walled construction. It's 225 gallons of diesel fuel. It has a main, uh, tank, and then there's a, um, an overflow tank in the event that a first tank failure should occur. That secondary tank, which encompasses the whole first tank, uh, would contain all the fuel. It's also alarmed, so that in the event of a leak, the secondary tank would contain the fuel and a notice would be sent, because this, this entire site is monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week from a central monitoring station. Let me just finish one other point. In addition to the second wall of the tank, the doors, I mean, this compartment here, the floor itself and the doorway going out has a raised sill. So, in other words, if there was a first tank failure and a secondary containment tank failure, the floor itself is epoxy-coated and acts as a tertiary means of containing the fuel. So, you have two security levels above and beyond what is already a secure first tank, and each, each one of them has alarm monitoring back to the central station. So, it is safe.
And?
As far as the operation of the, of the generator, the generator itself is exercised once a week, um, on a particular day. Usually, it's daytime hours, for sure. I believe it's Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. It might be a different day. I will say this, Verizon Wireless monitors the air quality in New Jersey, and if indeed it's a poor air quality day, they won't even fire that generator up. Now, when they fire the generator up, it's for exercising it, to keep it functional at all times, to keep the fuel fresh. It runs for about a half hour, and it's remotely started, monitored, and shut down. In the event of a failure, that generator could come on anytime, day or night, but at that point in time, it would be, uh, you know, because of an emergency condition.
Okay. And that's my next one. The point of the generator is what?
Only for emergency conditions, other than a weekly exercise for about a half hour, just to keep the thing.
In other words, in the event of a massive power failure, this site is able to maintain?
That is correct, and that's what provides continuous cellular communication, uh, communicate, cellular communications to all the carriers. I will say this, what Verizon also does as part of their construction, this telco cabinet provided by Verizon, the phone company, not Verizon Wireless, um, this is where all the back hall communications are to get Verizon Wireless, as well as any other carrier, back into the network. And Verizon Wireless does provide backup power to that cabinet, uh, to keep that cabinet functional, so that in the event of a catastrophic commercial outage, um, that generator will keep the T1 lines active and communications functioning.
Now, in general, and we'll talk about T-Mobile, they don't have a generator planned on their site.
No, they do not.
In an emergency, how would they service their, uh, service?
Uh, their equipment cabinet, uh, located on the end of their three cabinet configuration, they have a PPC telco. There's a lug box. Literally, they would have to pull, drag up a, uh, a portable generator if there was going to be a very extended outage. I mean, there's limited resources as to how many generators, but they would just pull up a trailer, park it on-site, and plug it in.
And in fact, Verizon has taken the proactive position to permanently generate all sites so that its sites don't go out of service.
It's part of their quality to service, and that's.
And sir, noise level, that, you, you won't be able to hear this generator when it's running from the outside, would you?
Um, there is some noise emitted from the outside, and, um, there are critical mufflers on it. There is an intake louver and an exhaust louver. Uh, in this particular environment where, somebody's prattling.
It's you. Just talk. Just keep talking.
Have your RF guy look at that.
Do you need a new battery?
Yeah, probably. Um, the noise itself that's generated in this particular environment, number one, you have a lot of ambient background noise because of the shopping center, the highway, but quite frankly, even in the evening, at a distance to anything of significance, whether it be, uh, the other side of the parking lot, uh, it'll be barely audible, and it would be part of the ambient background noise.
And again, it would only run in the evening and in case, in event of an emergency.
Only in the event of emergency.
Okay.
And sir, my question would be if it attracted the attention of teenagers that are in the evening hours saying, wow, that thing lights off every, you know, every day or every week, let's go, uh, inspect it and see what's there. Uh, you say that the place is monitored. Go ahead.
It is. Uh, if, number one, the entire compound is fenced in, it's locked, it's secured. The shelter itself is a, a secure building. There's intru, there are intrusion alarms. Uh, in fact, the technician, when he goes to the site to do work, has to call and get access before he can pass into the building. Uh, the doors themselves are hardened steel. They're not easily opened. The generator is inside. The fuel tank is inside, so there's, there's no real security issue. As far as the tower is constructed, it's inside a fenced area for anti-climbing. Potentially, the first rung of the pole is high enough where, I mean, you, you need a, either a bucket or a ladder to get to the first rung. So, those are the safety measures there.
How often, how often would a technician visit the site?
A technician would visit the site, uh, every four to six weeks for routine maintenance. There's no trash generated by the site. Uh, it's not manned during the day, so there's no need for any sewers or water. The only thing you need here is electricity and telecommunications, both of which are available out on the road and will be, uh, brought in to the site, uh, as was previously designed by T-Mobile, and we're just going to essentially tap what they're constructing, which is a multi-meter bank, so the electricity is already on-site, and they're going to make the arrangements to have the telecommunications cabinet brought in, so the telecommunications are already there. The only thing is that Verizon, being new to this site, will provide backup power to that, which was not previously going to be provided.
And to the right on that same sheet, Z02, uh, you show an elevation of the monopole. Can you briefly describe where the Verizon antennas would be located?
Sure. The pole, as was described earlier, is 150 feet during initial construction. Uh, the tower itself will be furnished with a flange on the top so that another 15-foot section can be added should the need arise in the future. The structure itself and the foundation are designed to accommodate this pole with all of these antennas plus more above. So, that's under T-Mobile's responsibility. They are the builder of the pole. Those were the conditions that were in their resolution. Verizon Wireless being a co-locator, as Mr. Peters was saying, had this been really just a straight co-op, co-location application, I'd be here and saying, we're these antennas right here, and we're putting this shelter here, and that's all we're really doing. So, the top antennas are the T-Mobile antennas. The secondary ones there are what was intended to be Sprint. That's their approved position with their shelter. Again, that's unknown at this time as to what's going to happen with that, but could be another carrier for that matter. And Verizon was approved at, top of the antennas at 131 feet in the third position.
Is there any lighting proposed that you're aware of?
No. There's no, uh, no blinking red light or anything at the top. Only sight lighting, I mean, should, there's no sight lighting per se being provided. There is one light on the shelter above the door.
Okay. And what's the wattage on that light?
It's a 70-watt high-pressure sodium. It has a, uh, footprint of, uh, near to the compound only. It will not shine outward by design.
You've had an opportunity to review the reports prepared by CME and by Birdsall in regard to the planning and, uh, engineering reports. Is that correct?
Yes, I have.
Okay. And are you able to technically comply with all of the requests of those reports?
Yes, we are.
Okay. I have no further questions with this witness.
I, I just had a quick question. I know the state or, or the township recently was doing some, um, spraying for gypsy moths or mosquitoes, and they get relatively low, and I don't know, is that 150 feet, does it require any kind of anti-collision or anything like that? Is that?
No. Generally speaking, uh, number one, the lighting of a tower is regulated by the FAA. Uh, it's, it's not our prerogative or anyone else's to decide to put a light or not, and generally, the rule of thumb is 200 feet or less does not get lit. Uh, this particular site, it's already been, uh, determined that there's no light required.
Does anybody have any other questions for this witness? Yes, Mr. Tantone?
Just one question. The generator housing, you said that was coated inside. If there was a leak, that would contain all 220 gallons?
Correct.
Nothing would leak out?
No. And, and quite frankly, you'd have to get through the tank, the secondary tank. You'd be in the.
Now, is that, that diesel fuel is filled from inside, or is there a spigot outside?
Uh, it's filled, there's an outside fill cap. One second. I've actually seen them both ways. We don't specify in these plans which way that is, but it's a.
Jonathan, should that be specified, uh, where the fill is going to be? Or Ernie?
If the board members have a concern about vandalism, I don't think it's an unreasonable request to ask the applicant to make it in, inside the building. And unless he's telling me there's physically a, an issue as it relates to a building code, if this is simply a vandalism or safety issue, ask him to put it inside.
The other issue is that these are zoning drawings. Uh, when we get to the, should we get approval, which I would expect since this is already an approved site, um, all of our next level of detail drawings, which are the construction level drawings, will need to go through your, your building code officials and go through the whole building permit process, so it's under the purview of your building code.
If we requested the filler to be inside, you could do that.
I, I have to ask this question, because I'm not sure it is inside, and I've done a lot of these sites, because the person that fills the generator does not have access to the shelter. They, they bring a pickup truck or a small truck with the, the diesel tank on the back, and I, and I know that from past, what it's done is they, it's a hose that's run up and is, it can, they usually put the concrete spill pad underneath it so that there can't be any.
Wouldn't it be wise to have that inside?
But I don't, they don't allow him access to the shelter.
Just for vandalism.
It's inside the fence there.
It's inside the fence area. And, and the fact is that, uh, we have these, it's a, it's a design structure that's been approved by, and I know, it doesn't matter, Verizon Wireless, through their environmental, uh, due diligence department, whoever is in charge of the environmental. So, it, to change that design is going to be quite, uh, impossible, I guess is the best word I could say, because it would have to be tailored through them. We have hundreds of these shelters throughout the state of New Jersey.
Yeah, I understand that. This is Howell Township, this is what I'm worried about, not.
Well, you must have about four of them in Howell right now.
Right. And I would also like to say that the shelter is a pre-manufactured item, and it has already received state DCA, who actually has oversight over your own building code department. Uh, they are this keeper of the books and the rules for the state of New Jersey, and they have already approved this shelter as it is manufactured. So, it's a, actually, the shelter itself is not under the purview of your town to and actually inspect the components.
I could make this, uh, we will inquire as to whether the shelter can be manufactured with an inside fill spout, and if it can be, we would accommodate that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Say, you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Visslaki brings up a good point. Mr. Peters, 150-foot monopole, uh, Squonkham Yellowbrook, uh, New Jersey American Water. We put an aircraft warning light on top of that because it was above a certain sea level.
I don't, I don't disagree with any of the testimony from the applicant's engineer. My recollection, and I don't process these, I just listen to them a whole bunch, was that, um, yes, FAA has control over them. I always thought that they were required under 300 feet.
We've been using 200 as the, as the benchmark before there is concern. The other thing is proximity to airports.
And lastly, if the board does have a concern, I don't think Mr. Stanzione's that unreasonable that we could ask him to get us a citation from someplace that says you don't, you do or don't need it.
Well, my, my concern is, Ernie, we do spraying, and Monmouth County does spraying, and they use Aldridge Road as a route for, uh, for helicopter traffic, for the spraying, actually, so.
Based upon that concern, I don't know that it's unreasonable to ask to make sure that we have a piece of paper from someone who has the authority to put or not put a light on top of this to tell us we do or don't need one.
Ernie, all I can suggest is that would have to be obtained by T-Mobile for, from the FAA. And what they do is they run an FAA, uh, certification. I, I might add that, uh, only, you are only allowed to light under 200 feet if the FAA allows it. And the reason being, very bluntly, because pilots know that, and they don't want to be lit. Lighting towers that are less than 200 feet, that would be a deceptive to a pilot, showing that things are, because what's not lit are the power towers that would be maybe adjacent to, in an area, and that's why the FAA controls this all. I, and I would, I don't know whether that particular site is located in an airport flight zone, whether it's near the, uh, Monmouth Airport.
It's, it's nearer, I'm a licensed pilot, so what you just stated is not necessarily true fact. Most of your navigational maps will indicate towers, and those towers are usually lit. My only concern at this point being, um, was that because of the spraying and the low level of, of some of these aircraft that fly over that area, you know, I don't believe it's in the ATA, which is the airport traffic area, right now. Although, that's usually five miles, nautical miles around the airport is the ATA. And I don't think it's within five miles of Alar, so it's not in the traffic pattern and stuff like that. But I agree with you saying that FAA has jurisdiction on whether that needs to be light. I don't think we need to be concerned about it overly. I was just concerned about the county low-level flying in that area, because they've already been across that. I take, I go to that bus stop every day to go to the city to work, and I've seen helicopters right at tree level going over spraying.
Well, with all due respect, Mr., I'm not sure which part you thought I said was wrong. What I'm saying is that we can't light.
I'm saying that you said all pilots know anything under 200 feet is not lit.
Well, unless it's required, because we can't light under 200 feet without the FAA approval.
Correct. I agree. The FAA has jurisdiction.
And the only other thing I can say is generally, you're spraying.
You're submitting an application to the, uh, the FAA for every tower you put up?
We do an FAA request, and then the FAA says either, uh, yes or no. In this particular case, I have to emphasize, we're not building this tower.
Yeah.
And, and so, T-Mobile had to pursue that.
So, T-Mobile submitted for an FAA?
Would have have to submit it for an FAA on it. And the best of our knowledge from the plans that we've been provided, there is no lighting that's being asked for by the FAA. If the FAA asks for it, it has to be done.
All right.
That, that's, that's a given. So, we would accept as a condition that if it's required by the FAA, it certainly would be lit, that, because that has to happen.
Well, I mean, because I don't think it was brought up in the first application if T-Mobile had made that request to the FAA. I don't know if they did, if they didn't. You said presumably they did.
Well, they would have to, I, I will also say, Mr. Peters can clarify this for me, but I would think they would have to satisfy your construction department with their construction drawings, that they have all their outside agency approvals.
I, I guess that there would be an outside agency approval. I don't know.
Yeah. Typically, that.
Can I ask our attorney, if this is something that should have been addressed the first application, we really can't ask this applicant to do anything about it. Am I correct?
Well, he's, he's amending the first application, so. I think you can ask, but I think what, what Mr. Stanzione said is, is fine, that if it's required, they'll, they'll do it.
Well, we'll ask T-Mobile to do it, because, again, it's not our tower.
Well, I think it'd be due diligence to say, ask T-Mobile whether or not they've submitted that request to the FAA, and the FAA came back with no comment.
Yeah, but, uh, we, we don't have a problem with that, because we're here to amend Wireless is not building the tower. So you can, as part of your resolution, require that T-Mobile provide evidence that they've obtained the FAA approval. I don't have a problem with that.
However you want to do it. I don't think it matters to the board.
If the board feels it's a concern, then we should do that. If they don't, then let's, you know, we can drop it.
The only reason I'm saying this is because Verizon Wireless can't make the request of the FAA, because there's not our...
Verizon Wireless can make the request of the applicant.
We can communicate to T-Mobile. And we would like to put that in the resolution that you can...
I don't have a problem with that. It doesn't seem to me like this should be a big deal. If the standard operating procedure is to send this to the FAA, then they probably have it.
Okay. And I'm saying, if you just put it in that resolution, that T-Mobile shall supply the FAA clearance, because I'm here on their behalf to amend their application. And if you want to say, we'll communicate to them, that's fine. I'm gonna send them a copy of your resolution when it's approved. Yes, Mr. Peters.
Section 188-98C, Prence 5, lighting. Towers shall not be artificially lighted unless required by the FAA or other applicable authority. If lighting is required, the lighting alternatives and design chosen shall cause the least disturbance to surrounding views and shall be subject to applicable lighting standards as or elsewhere contained within township ordinances. So again, the first line, towers shall not be artificially lighted, comma, unless required by FAA or other applicable authority.
Thank you.
I just, here's my question. We dealt with this when the original proposal was made, so I have to assume...
That's my point, is I believe the engineering department would have that answer if all the smart folk here don't.
Mr. Chair, I have one question. I wasn't here in 2006 when this first application came before. I'm just wondering, in rural areas like Howell, how come these towers don't get recommended to have like camouflage on them to blend into the rural area? Could you just answer that, or you don't know?
I can answer generally, because 150-foot fake tree would stand out like a sore thumb in Howell.
Well, there's not only fake trees. I mean, there's other camouflages out there.
Basically, yeah. I mean, we've built clock towers, but anything 150 feet, remember, this is done in accordance with township specifications. So it's, the reason it's going so high is it's required to accommodate up to five carriers. Once you get up over a certain height level, in my experience, and I've seen them throughout the state, the camouflage makes them so obvious, it's not effectively camouflage.
The only places I've seen camouflage towers is along the Plarkway. That's about it.
Yeah. Well, that's true. And you look at the various, there are some in the mountainous section, Sussex County, where they're back against a mountain backdrop. That works to a certain point. But if you ever drive the Pennsylvania Turnpike, there's a beautiful 180-foot bottle brush sitting on one that you can see for about 20 miles, because it just stands out like a sore thumb.
Looking at this from a planning perspective...
Rich.
Sorry.
Oh.
It was part of the actual bid specifications issued by Howell Township called for the tower and its current configuration. The other thing is, quite frankly, just a commentary from a planning perspective. A lot of time, a lot of times, the camouflaging technique is worse than the medicine. In other words, you're adding mass, whatever you're doing. A tower is a tower, and there are a lot of towers around. Quite frankly, I think people have gotten somewhat used to seeing them, not making an excuse for them, but you add mass whether you try to change the design in some cases. Bring it up.
I have just one question. And you're fine with the comments from our fire department and the approval resolution to include space for our emergency services in the tower as well?
Again, it's T-Mobile's tower, and I believe they, I'm trying to look through the old resolution to see that they...
But this was as of February of '08, their comments. So I'm assuming it had to be done over?
Sure. We agree. Let them figure out where they're gonna put it. But I think that's one of the reasons it was designed to be extendable. Are there any other questions or comments from any board members? Any professionals? Seeing none, I'd like to open this application up to the public. Does anyone from the public that would like to comment, please step forward?
Excuse me. Mr. Smith, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board? It's the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Don Smith, 54 Vandevere Road. Has, have you ever considered using natural gas-powered generators where natural gas is available? It's cleaner, it's quieter, and you don't have a fuel degradation problem that you do have with diesel.
Natural gas has been used in some circumstances, but our normal course of action, especially in this remote location of the parking lot, diesel was the choice of the carrier.
Maybe the township should consider requiring where natural gas is available, because it's a heck of a lot better for air quality than diesel is by far.
I'd just like to reiterate that the emergency generator is exercised minimally, and other than that, it's only used in emergency conditions.
Well, you know, you can't let a diesel truck idle for more than three minutes in the state of New Jersey, so let's just compare diesel to diesel. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anyone else from the public that'd like to comment on this application? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public portion and turn it back over to our board members. Are there any other comments from any of our board members? Any from any of our professionals? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on this application.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this application under the condition that Verizon Wireless will communicate with the, their prime of the antenna, which is Omni Communications, AKA T-Mobile, to determine whether or not the FAA requirement to have a light on top of this tower is required, and all other conditions that have been discussed between the planner and the engineer and the applicant, and what's been discussed here. Thank you, sir.
Do I have a second?
Who was that?
Mr. Schneider. Mr. Sayre, Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Mr. Frazee?
Yes.
Mr. Saye?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Morello?
Yes.
Chairman Estes?
Yes.
Application's approved.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, board members. Appreciate your interest.
Mr. Kachala, do we have any reason to go into executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion for adjournment.
I'll second Visslaki and Saye. All in favor?
Aye.